Okay, so it's 7:01, we're gonna go into our workshop for the first half hour and then at 7:30 promptly, we'll convene our regular meeting agenda. So, tonight, for our workshop, we're going to discuss with guidance by Jennifer and our other consultants, the special use permit process. What it is, all of that good stuff. So, thank you Jennifer.
So, tonight, we're covering special use permits, which is one of the items within your jurisdiction along with site plan and subdivision certificates of appropriateness and architectural review. So, special use permits are just one of the land use approvals that are within your jurisdiction. We're gonna talk about what it is, what it's not, the procedure, and I have some case law examples as well. So, as I just mentioned, and I've got the PowerPoint presentation up on both screens if you want to follow along. So, a special use permit, we're gonna cover what it is, the procedures for reviewing a special use permit, what happens when someone needs a variance from a special use permit standard, and what to be considering in your final determinations, both reasonable conditions of the special permit and the concept of substantial evidence. So, what is a special use permit? A special use permit refers to a particular type of use that is allowed in the zoning district, subject to compliance with certain standards. So, it is in your schedule of use regulations listed as a particular manner in which a particular use is authorized, but it does come with it certain standards. So, it's not a use that the city council has determined can just be permitted as of right, maybe just subject to site plan approval or a building permit. It's something that, it's permitted as long as it meets several conditions, and it's up to the planning board to review those conditions to make sure that the use complies, and if so, the permit is granted. Importantly, it's not a variance. A lot of times, people think special permit and they think that they equate it with a variance. And a lot of times, those two terms are used interchangeably, but they are very different. So, unlike a variance, which gives permission to an owner to use a piece of property in a manner that's inconsistent with zoning, a special permit, again, allows somebody to use a property that's consistent with the zoning ordinance as long as it meets certain standards.
Quick question.
Yes?
Certain parcels carry special use permit requirements, certain parcels don't. What's built into the decision-making around which might and which might not carry a special use permit requirement?
So, I'm gonna flip forward for a second.
Oh, am I jumping ahead?
Yeah, so, here's your schedule of use regulations. I know that this is completely illegible up on the PowerPoint, but you do have access to this in E-codes in the zoning code. What this is, is on the left-hand side, you see all of the types of uses that are permitted by district. Then, across the top, is all the various zoning districts within the city. And within each of the little boxes, you have either an X, meaning the use is not permitted; you have a P, which means it's a permitted use; an SP, which means it's a special permit use permitted by the planning board; or an SP with an asterix, meaning it's a special permit use permitted by the city council. So, it's district by district and use by use. So, a particular use, for example, a bed and breakfast, might be a permitted use in one district, but it might be subject to a special permit approval in another district. So, you always have to look at the district that you're in, and what uses are permitted, and how they're permitted in each of those districts. So, this is your tool for determining that. So, I hope that helped.
It does.
Answer your question. Okay, there we go. All right, so, you kind of covered my first topic here, a list of uses. The zoning code identifies uses in each zoning district that are subject to a special permit. We just reviewed the tool in the zoning code that you can use to determine what special permit uses are permitted in your district. As far as approval authority goes, generally speaking, the legislative bodies, so the city council, can authorize the planning board or the zoning board to decide special use permit applications. So, city council has the authority by default for special use permits, but it can delegate that authority to either the planning board or the zoning board, or it can keep it to itself. So, in Beacon, as we saw in the, I didn't quite see because it's hard to read up there, but as we just discussed, in Beacon, some special permits, the planning board is the approval authority, some special permits, the city council is the approval authority. In recent years, the city council has been sort of getting away from being the approval authority for special permits. So, for example, we just had, right, the accessory apartment, that was, there was a special permit that just got transferred from the city council to the planning board, if I recall correctly.
Yes.
And John might remember.
Right, it was the city council, then it went through the planning board, and then they took it away and made it as of right use.
That's right, yeah, and that was for accessory apartments. So then, as far as procedure goes, the zoning code is gonna specify exactly what procedure to follow for reviewing special permits, and that's at Section 223-18 of your code. That section specifies the number of copies of the application form that needs to be, the application package that needs to be submitted by the applicant, the timing, it has to be submitted two weeks in advance of a meeting. It specifies public notice requirements for the application, a public hearing is required. And that's a matter of state law, so we have to require a public hearing for all special use permits. For site plan, that's not the case. For site plan, local municipalities actually have the option of requiring a public hearing or not. In Beacon, in your code, you do require a public hearing for site plan applications, but that's not the case everywhere in New York, because the state enabling statute gives that option to the municipalities to decide. So, that was a little tangent. 223-18 also specifies that you have to make your final decision on the special use permit application within 62 days after the public hearing is closed or after SECRE is complete. The application has to include a certificate of inspection, and that's referring to that INI, the inflow and infiltration review, that has to happen with every application, and that's, in addition to the code, in the past couple years or so, the city has undertaken efforts to try to identify properties that may be improperly connecting their sanitary sewer to the stormwater, make sure we're cutting that connection. As an application comes in for a land use review, that's a good time to check that. It also explains that a special permit expires after the approval is issued. If a building permit is not, building permit application is not submitted within one year, an applicant would have to request an extension, or the approval expires and is null and void at that point. Once a building permit is issued, the applicant then has either one year or two years to complete, depending on if it's a new building or renovation. So, those are just some of the really exciting procedural aspects of the code as it relates to special permits. The other interesting thing about special permits and the procedures for the code is, in 223-18, it does give the building inspector some pretty powerful authority. The building inspector can revoke a special permit if it's found that the use of the premises under that special permit doesn't conform to the conditions of the special permit. So, you issue a special permit that says this use, you know, conforms with the character of the neighborhood as long as it's operated from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and it's found that that use is operating consistently until, you know, 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night. Under our code, the building inspector would have the authority to revoke that special permit. So, that's a pretty powerful tool.
And that never sunsets? I'm sorry, that never sunsets, that ability to do that?
Nope, that's a provision in our code.
Is it subject to litigation? Like administrative review or?
Sure, so, any determination by the building inspector is subject to review. The first step would be an appeal to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
So, the zoning board of appeals would hear and determine whether that revocation was proper, and then the zoning board's decision could then get appealed in an Article 78 proceeding to Dutchess County Supreme Court.
Oh, wow. Would that ever get sent back to the planning board? If it was a special use permit that was issued by the planning board and then was...
If the, if the planning board's resolution specifically said that it was retaining jurisdiction and, you know, authorized the planning, or the building inspector to bring it back to the planning board instead of revoking automatically, it would, basically, that's not addressed in the code, so unless it's addressed in the resolution, then no, unless the applicant affirmatively reapplied and sought out some sort of modification of the...
So, okay, so that...
Maybe that's part of what your question was, if, if an applicant wanted to reinstate or somehow make good and promised never to do it again, they would need to come and reapply?
They would, yeah, 'cause at that point, there would be no special permit in effect.
Got it.
Yes.
Is there any tool to enforce compliance other than revocation? Like, is there any provision for other fines, or is it just kind of like, you know, you have a nuclear option and that's it?
Yeah, so, there is, there's the justice court process, and I'd have to double-check, I can't recall if in Beacon, it's a violation of the code to violate a resolution of the planning board. I think it is, I think that amendment was made in recent years, but I would have to double-check. If that's in there, if there's a provision in the code that says it's a violation of the zoning chapter to violate the conditions of a planning board resolution, then the building inspector, as the enforcement authority of the zoning code, could issue an appearance ticket and a violation to appear in city court, city justice court, and that's treated as a criminal violation.
Wow. And the court could impose a fine?
Correct.
Yep.
Yes, yeah. All right.
Don't mess with Bruce.
Bruce has a lot of power here. All right, so, there's the schedule of use regulations, which we talked about. All right, so, here's the meat of special permits. As I mentioned, special use permits, it connotes a use that's permitted in the zoning districts as long as it meets certain uses. There are general standard, I'm sorry, certain requirements. There are general standards or requirements, and then there are specific standards or requirements. General standards are found at 223-18, and there's, what, 1, 2, 3, 4, 6 of them, and these apply to every single special use permit in the city. And we can kind of run through what they are. The first one is that the location and size of the use, the nature, the hours, and intensity of the operations involved in or conducted in connection with it, the size of the site in relation to it, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it, are such that it will not conflict with the appropriate and orderly development of the site and the existing permitted uses on adjacent blocks. So, basically, it has to be in keeping with the appropriate and orderly development of the district. The second one is that the location, nature, and height of the buildings, walls, and fences, and the nature and extent of the landscaping on the site are such that the use will not conflict with the existing permitted uses on adjacent blocks, and will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development, use of adjacent land and buildings. So, this is focusing on buildings, walls, fences, and landscaping, and confirming that those, the nature of those things that are proposed in connection with a special permit are not gonna conflict with existing permitted uses and the appropriate development of the area. The third is that operations in connection with any special use are not gonna be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibration, or other characteristics in Article 4, that's your performance standards. Then would be the operations of any permitted use not requiring a special permit. So, is the special use going to create noise, fumes, vibration, or other similar, you know, annoyances that would be, you know, that would be more than would be allowed by a permitted use not requiring a special permit? Fourth is that the parking areas will be of adequate size for the particular use and properly located and suitably screened from adjoining residential uses. That the entrance and exit drives are laid out to achieve maximum safety, and the uses will not cause unreasonable traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard. So, there, we're focused on parking and traffic and safety issues. The next one is that uses, buildings, and operations will be accessible for emergency services and appropriately located for water, sewer, and other infrastructure requirements. So, you know, is an ambulance able to get there, is a fire truck able to get to the site to properly deploy their services, and is there appropriate water, sewer, and other utilities servicing the site? And lastly, the use will comply with other regulations in the code and will be compatible with the recommendations in the city's comprehensive plan and the LWRP, which is the local waterfront revitalization program. So, the use has to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and all other provisions of the code. So, those are the general standards, those are the standards that apply to every single special use permit in the city. Then there are specific standards. There's a lot of these, there's a lot of specific standards in your code for various uses. Not every single special use permit has a set of specific standards, some of them just rely on the general standards. I pulled just one example out of your code for bed and breakfast. This is at 223-24.4, as just an example of standards that the city council felt were appropriate for making sure that a bed and breakfast in particular is not going to have an adverse impact in the district in which it's proposed. So, as long as an applicant can demonstrate that they meet these standards, then the special use permit would have to be issued.
Question, just in terms of, when we talk about SECRE, some of those adverse impacts are pretty well delineated. In cases like this, what sets the criteria for what an adverse impact is, what rises to that level?
Right, so, I mean, if we go back and look at the general standards, you know, we see, let's see, so, okay, you just had, so, parking, for example, parking and traffic, so if you go to D, that overlaps with SECRE, right? Because when you make your SECRE determination, you're making a determination that the proposed special use will not create a significant adverse environmental impact as it relates to parking or traffic. So, there is some overlap.
I was gonna say, to some degree, they would, they would need to align, right, our review and position on special use, as well as our review of SECRE and our findings there.
Yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, I think that you would not want to be in a situation where you are saying that there's no significant adverse impact with respect to traffic for proposed use, you know, traffic congestion, that the roadways, you know, can handle all of the traffic, and, you know, it all, you know, meets those tests, but then, a month later, you're finding that you're gonna deny a special permit because of traffic impacts, because you find that they don't meet this condition D.
That would be inconsistent.
That would be a situation that I would not recommend that you be in.
Is it possible that with the special permit, the intensity of use issue, where it, an adverse impact doesn't necessarily rise to the standard of a SECRE, but does not meet the standard of the special use permit?
Right, so, I think you're talking about, you know, for SECRE, you have to find that there's a, you know, there's no significant adverse impact, but I think you're asking, is there some delta between where, maybe it's not significant, but maybe it's an impact that, you know, that would cause you to find that it doesn't meet one of these standards. So, I've always thought theoretically, I think that's possible. I've seen cases that say, look, if you make one finding in SECRE, you can't make an opposite finding when you're, if you're gonna deny an approval. I think you have to be very careful, it's a very nuanced concept.
Maybe one way to look at these would be as areas of focus, but your criteria for determining whether there's an adverse impact or not should be pretty across the board, whether you're looking at SECRE, whether you're looking at special use permit. Your criteria for a traffic study or for whether a driveway is laid out safely should be the same, but this is pointing you at certain things and saying, for a bed and breakfast, it's in a residential neighborhood, we want the ingress and egress to be safe, we want the parking areas to be screened, but the criteria for impacts would probably, should not be too much different from everything else, otherwise you'd open yourself up to being accused of being arbitrary and capricious.
I think that's a great way to look at it, that's a great summary. Right, so, these were some of the specific standards for bed and breakfast. Again, some of these are black and white, right? Minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet, either you meet that or you don't. Others, as we just saw in the general standards, are, require a little bit more discretion. You know, you're applying your discretion as any board members to determine whether the applicant has met that standard. It's not as black and white. So, you know, other, off-street parking has to be screened from adjacent residential properties, lodging provided shall be for periods of less than two weeks in duration. So, a lot of these end up being conditions of the special permit as well. So, what happens if someone wants to establish a bed and breakfast, it's subject to a special permit, they're on a lot of 30,000 square feet instead of 40,000 square feet? That doesn't necessarily mean that they can't get the special permit. They're allowed to seek a variance from the special permit standards in the same way that they would be allowed to seek a variance from setback requirements of the district.
So, does that mean their first stop would be ZBA?
Typically, it would get referred to the zoning board. It would come here first and get referred over to the zoning board. So, there was a case that went all the way up to the Court of Appeals, which is the highest court in New York back in 2004, that confirmed, in fact, that the New York State statutes do allow the zoning board authority to grant area variances from special permit standards. So, there was a question in the law about whether that was the case or not, and that was resolved, gosh, almost 20 years ago at this point. Just a couple minutes left here. So, I don't know if we're gonna get to the case law examples, but maybe that'll be a preview for next training session, we can go through some of the case law samples. So, when you are making your final determination on a special use permit, both New York State statute and your code allow you to impose reasonable conditions that are directly related to and incidental to the proposed special use permit. These, you know, one case law example here, these conditions have to relate to the use of the property and not the applicant or the owner. This case that I have cited here, Dexter versus Town Board of the Town of Gates, it's an old case, it's from 1975, but I think the facts of it are kind of interesting. It actually relates to a rezoning, so, the applicant asked the town board to rezone a particular piece of property. It was to allow a supermarket, in fact, the Wegmans, everybody loves Wegmans. So, Wegmans petitioned the town board to rezone the property. The town board did rezone the property in response to that petition and imposed a bunch of conditions on the rezoning, including a condition that said, "The application for the construction of a resale supermarket by Wegman Enterprises, Inc. and related structures shall in order to the benefit of Wegman Enterprises, Inc. only and for that specific purpose only." So, basically, the town board was saying, "We'll rezone the property to allow for Wegmans to build a supermarket, but only for so long as that supermarket is Wegmans." So, the rezoning only applied to Wegmans. So, that case went up to the Court of Appeals, and they held that condition was improper because it was personal to the Wegmans entity itself and didn't relate to the use of the property. And that goes to the very, like, fundamental principle that zoning deals with the land use and not the person who owns it or occupies it, or the business entity that owns it or occupies it.
So, their thinking was that they would save themselves a step of rezoning it back to its previous use if Wegmans disappeared?
Right, I guess that is really like Wegmans, didn't want to allow, you know, shop writer to stop and shop or anyone else that benefit. So, I know we've got not much time left here.
You've got three minutes.
Okay, three minutes, that's a trip. The other thing that you want to keep in mind when you're considering your final determination in addition to what conditions you may want to, might want to put on a special permit is the, you know, age-old, rational basis, substantial evidence standard. So, the decision to grant or deny a special permit must have a rational basis supported by substantial evidence in the record. So, this standard applies to every single decision that you make, whether it's special permit, site plan, subdivision, any decision, you have to have a rational basis in the record that you can point to.
Can you read that one more time with emphasis? That is really important.
It's so important.
Super-duper important.
Because the flip side of that means that if you are, making a decision, does not have a rational basis in your record, and the record being the testimony, the documents, everything before you, then your decision is arbitrary and capricious, which will be overturned by a court, which you don't want to have. So, again, I'll read that if you want. The decision to grant or deny a special permit must have a rational basis supported by substantial evidence in the record. The applicant is the one that has the burden to show compliance with the conditions of a special use permit. And I think that this quote from the Second Department case from 1998 is a helpful one. It says, "While a property owner is not entitled to a special use permit merely for the asking, once it is shown that the contemplated use is in conformance with the conditions imposed," those are the, those general conditions and the specific conditions that we spoke about, "the special use permit must be granted unless there are reasonable grounds for its denial supported by substantial evidence." So, I think that's a really powerful statement and speaks to the standard that applies to your decisions.
Great. Fantastic.
So, for next time, we'll go through some, some examples of cases and fact patterns.
Sorry, I can't wait. Fact patterns. Awesome. All right, thank you Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Well, welcome, everybody, to our two-week-delayed City of Beacon March meeting of the planning board. First item of business, any notes on last month's meeting notes?
No.
Nope? Anyone else? I'll accept a motion to approve last month's meeting notes into the record.
Motion.
Motion by Kevin.
Seconded.
Seconded by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, so that brings us to our first agenda item. This is the continued public hearing on an application for a special use permit and site plan approval. Hotel and event space 1113 Walcott Avenue, submitted by Prophecy Theater LLC.
Hotel and event space 1113 Walcott Avenue, submitted by Prophecy Theater LLC. And Jennifer, did you just want to give us a brief synopsis of where we've been and how we've gotten here?
Yes, okay, so, this application, as you mentioned, we are currently in a public hearing, it's been continued for several months, I don't know how many times at this point, but for several months.
Applicant knows, long time.
It's not my turn.
So, this is approval for a special, an application for a special use permit and site plan approval, we just spoke about special use permits and what those are. The applicant is still in the process of providing information to the board, the board has an opportunity, obviously, still to ask questions and ask for further information to the public, it still has an opportunity to weigh in. You are moving towards a point where you will be making your secret determination, so whether there is or is not a significant adverse environmental impact, but you're still in that data and information collection stage. Once you've issued your secret determination, you can then make your decision on the special use permit and site plan application.
Thank you. Evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Taylor Palmer, I'm a partner with the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader. On behalf of the applicant, for the record, it's nearly a year of public hearings. As the Planning Board attorney mentioned, we are before you this evening in connection with our continued review for the Prophecy Theater application in 1113 Walcott. Welcome incoming member Francis, I know that's new information that's forthcoming, and we do appreciate Jill's service to the board, and hopefully she's watching this meeting from her balcony this evening. Before I dive in, Mr. Chairman, also I want to say thank you for noticing I did get a haircut yesterday. Now, back to business, tonight I am joined by our architect, R.A. Siegel, as well as our traffic consultant, Richard D. Andrea, from Colliers Engineering, and Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design. We're also joined by our noise consultant, who will present this evening. The applicant is also joining us this evening. We were last before you in February, on the 15th, and we are here for our continued discussion and hearing on the reduced event management plans and the acoustical reports prepared for the property. Since our last meeting, and of course, the snowstorm, we did submit a letter dated February 28th introducing further reductions to the conference and events base proposal, which now limits the maximum capacity to 150 total attendees, so we've reduced that down from last month, we were at 180. Of course, the original consideration was close to 500. The applicant also submitted a revised event management plan, and that simplifies and streamlines those parameters that are included in that event management plan, so it counts for the hours of operation, the days, and the number of, and types of events per year, and it limits the, certain, we call them types of events. Our simplified proposal mandates the following, these are included in our submission, just for the benefit of the public joining this evening. Events are now limited to Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, holiday eves, so the holiday eves are included, it's Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, and then Veterans' Day, so those are the holiday eves. There will be no events, as we discussed in the last meeting, on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays. There was discussion with the board, of course, about potentially operating all days of the week, but we've maintained no operations on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, just of the event space. Of course, the church on the existing premises today could be open all days, indoor, outdoor, and that's a presently permitted use on the premises. The maximum capacity for events, as I noted, is 150 now, and that's on Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, holidays, and holiday eves, and then we've limited the number of attendees to 130 maximum on Thursdays. On Fridays, Saturdays, and holiday eves, events will now end no later than 8:30 PM, with attendees dispersed by 9:00 PM. We had an extensive discussion with the board about trying to ensure that patrons of the event space would be off the site before evening hours related to the city's noise ordinance, and generally speaking, just reasonable hours of operation in the neighborhood. On Sundays, Thursdays, and holidays preceding workdays, events will end no later than 7:30 PM, which attendees dispersed by 8:00 PM, the same concept related to the noise ordinance, and of course, respect to the community and neighborhood. There will be a total, a maximum total of 160 events per year, of course, that relates to the number of events total at the site, and the cafe will be closed, the public, if attendance is greater than 100 attendees, that all related back to a larger parking number, of course, none of which we come near to triggering with the reduced operations. The cafe hours of operation will be 7:00 AM to 8:30 PM, Sunday through Thursday, and 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Friday and Saturday. The cemetery trail will be gated off to prevent any access after 9:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays, and holiday eves, and 8:00 PM on days preceding workdays. Lastly, in response to comments that we received at the last hearing, we are proposing an additional hotel staffer, so there will always be someone onsite 24/7 related to the hotel use, so we added that as a consideration that had been mentioned at a few meetings previously. In addition to the event plan, and management plan, excuse me, the applicant also submitted a revised traffic report, bless you, assessing the maximum capacity reduction, and the acoustic report responding to the noise consultant's report, which we'll mention in just a minute. As discussed previously, the city's traffic consultant has provided no further comments, and has concluded the applicant's proposed management plan should effectively mitigate against any adverse impacts. The city's traffic and safety commission also had the opportunity, that was another recommendation of this board at the last meeting, and as a result of the referral, they issued a memo recently that said the commission found that the project has adequate on-street parking in the surrounding area to meet its needs, so that's a recent update to the submission.
With one note, that they strongly recommend deterrence from parking on Academy and, the other one?
Yes.
Stratford, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Additionally, our noise consultant, another Mike B., because we have enough Johns, will discuss shortly our second acoustical report, which reiterates its prior conclusion that the project will not generate sounds exceeding the city's daytime or nighttime noise standards, and will not have any potentially significant adverse noise impacts, given that any produced sound levels will be consistent with the existing built environment and the busy 90 corridor and the existing uses. It also recognized the applicant's reduced hours event capacity, it also assesses the plainly audible standard, albeit, we are not exceeding or proposing night hours for operations. I'll, instead of stealing all Mike's talking points, I'll have him hit on specifics about the noise and the, the measures we've implemented onsite and internal to the building itself. We've taken a lot of steps with you all to try and mitigate and further reduce any potential impacts, and we hope, you know, we've been responsive to those of the public, comments, you know, from, from adjoining property owners that previously said, "Look, looking at events below 200 persons, we have, we've reduced the hours, the event capacity, and the like, we're really trying to not only meet the secret standards, but those in the special permit, and this redevelopment proposal is designed to also allow for more efficient and effective enforcement," because that's been a comment from the board, "so we tried to streamline what days, what hours, and that they wouldn't go beyond night hours for community character or for enforcement purposes." So with that, I will turn to, unless the board has specifics, I'll go to our noise consultant, who will go through findings in his report, and I know you will likely refer to yours if they are here with us this evening.
Good evening, Chairman and board members, my name is Michael Bonchi, I was here before you in February, been a consultant in the environmental industry, and particularly addressing noise and air quality impacts for 43 years. To reiterate, you know, we're dealing with an existing church, what used to be a church facility, an erectory on Mulcairne Ave, and it has, it fronts on Route 9D, which is considered an urban principal arterial, meaning it collects a lot of traffic, has a fairly high traffic level. What we did after the last hearing, at your request, was several things. Number one, I went back and added an analysis of the patrons' voices as they would exit the front of the venue, that's all in Figure 1, and then, as they would approach Route 9D, and I also analyzed the effect of the intervening hotel building, I hadn't really done that before, but if you take a look at Figure 1, you'll see that the new hotel building in particular, as it extends westward from the erectory, provides a pretty good barrier between the venue itself and the, the southern wall of the West End Apartments. So anyway, with regard to our analysis, and I'll kind of work this in with what I see as the noise consultancy's responses or commentary, basically, number one is, we've pretty much, I think, put the venue itself to bed, in terms of its ability to meet the daytime standard. Well, I guess first I should start with the change in hours. The change in hours assures that the dispersal will occur by 9:00 PM, and therefore, the daytime standard is what is applicable, so that's the 55 decibels at the property line. With regard, so we kind of leave behind the more kind of vague, possibly more stringent, plainly audible, but inside the adjacent residences, as opposed to outside, and on the outside of the properties. Basically, with regard to the venue, we put on the throttle at, for volume, at 95 decibels on the inside, when you put in the loss, the barrier insertion loss of the walls, the church walls, which are concrete and brick, and then put on acoustic glass, that results in about a 36, a minimum of about a 36 decibel decrease, which gets you to about 59 decibels at the windows, so by the time, again, you get to the property line, you're below the 55 decibel daytime standard. And again, the venues will end at, at the latest, at 8:30, and so that means that you don't have to deal with the plainly audible standard. With regard to, with regard to the deck, that issue has also been, I think, sufficiently addressed, that area is going to have a very substantial extension of the churches, the former church property's brick wall, the deck itself is elevated about 10 feet off the ground, so the wall will extend from the ground level up to the deck, and then go 10.8 feet above the deck, and will extend to the western end of that deck as well. There was some discussion as to whether or not there would be openings, and what we've decided is that we'll do some sort of architectural treatment, which will maintain a faux opening in the bottom portions, that faux opening will be filled, and then consequently, you won't have any sort of flanking effort through the wall, in other words, you'll have a solid wall, and that'll have that full effect. Underneath the deck is where the HVAC is going to be for the prophecy hall itself, so that would be the sound mitigation for that. The deck itself, again, is up, is up about 10 feet off the ground, it was going to be 10 feet off the ground, and then the wall extends up there, and never had any proposed window openings, and it extends to the western end of the deck. And I believe that we have a concurrence in that, both the venue and the deck and the HVAC, that those standards would be met. Then we go to the hotel building, will in fact, serve as an effective barrier to the West End Lofts, the West End Apartments, in terms of the building itself, that there's a pretty, there's a pretty good intervention between the two, and you have a 35-foot-high structure, you know, with 30 rooms in it, so that provides a pretty effective barrier between any of the people exiting the venue, or, for example, loading and unloading at the back corner of the venue, and the West End Lofts themselves. The church itself is an intervening barrier for anything that's between the two, on the river ridge side. With regard to patrons, what I did was I analyzed 10 people, I think was the number that people used, I had originally analyzed 75 decibels, adding the two additional conversations got me up to about 79 decibels, I then put those folks at the entrance, the front entrance to the venue, and then calculated it to the property line, and came up with about a 24 decibel reduction, which gets you down to about 55 decibels at the property line, that's on the southern property line, the river's edge side. Then I also did the same thing for people speaking out along the sidewalk at Route 9D, and the sidewalk pretty much goes straight out, so you always have the same separation, and so you'll have the same diminution, because the same space is available for that diminution. And so, basically, again, it seems that noise consultancy has said that the patrons speaking onsite will likely be compliant, and again, that's with the daytime standard, the 55 decibel standard. The, one other thing of note in that, too, is that there was a discussion in the noise consultancy that said that the patrons' voices returning to their cars in that location, meaning Route 9D, would not be subject to Chapter 149. In other words, within, once you get off, once you get to the boundary line between the property and the right-of-way for Route 9D, which occurs to the west of the sidewalk, in other words, that's 100-foot right-of-way there, and so 9D and the sidewalk don't occupy all of it, so it runs about 20 or 30 feet onto the property, onto what you would think is the property, onto the front edge. So, once you get up to that sidewalk, you're clearly within the right-of-way of Route 9D, and that, I think, applies to something a little bit later. The issue that that sort of leaves us with, I think, is the traffic that runs along the north, or is going to be running along the north driveway. First of all, the north driveway is in existence now, this is not a new sound source, it's been in existence for the church, so there was, there were vehicles running back and forth on there, there was no mitigation, no fencing, or anything like that before. I had originally thought that a nine-foot fence would be necessary there, with the intervening hotel, I think I was able to take that back to six feet, there was some discussion as to, you know, that it does show effectiveness for the 55 decibel receptor sitting at the property line, which is the standard, and so the discussion goes to what type of fence that you put in. The recommendation was a cedar, a rough cedar fence, you want something with a rough surface, and a tongue and groove, meaning you don't just butt the boards together, but you do a tongue and groove, and that way, when things change over time, when the boards maybe shrink or expand over time, when it's wet or cold, that they don't create gaps. The alternative I was thinking of was a double-sided fence, I've done that one before, too, is that you put the good side on, for example, with a stockade fence, you put the good side back-to-back, and, or the bad side back-to-back, and you have, so you have a double fence at the property line. And again, just in case some of the boards develop a little bit of gapping, you have the fence on the other side to handle that situation. So what it really comes down to was the vehicular sound levels on that particular stretch that runs between the hotel and the, and the property line with the West End Apartments, or West End Lofts. Basically, like I said, the property line matches, and I think we're in agreement with that, that'll meet the daytime standard, so the question becomes, okay, now you have vehicles transiting that area. Noise consultancy pointed out that they, they pointed out that the Transportation Noise Modeling Manual, which is an LMAX, in other words, that's about the upper 1% of the vehicular sounds, I calculated them down in the mid-60 level, down to even to the 50s, because the traffic on that section, it's 12 feet wide, so you're not going to get any heavy trucks, they just don't have the turning radius, they don't have the space to get in there, and this is not the type of use that attracts that sort of thing. So you largely get vehicles and vans, and maybe the occasional panel truck that'll go in there. But with those, those particular sources, the source of the sound at cruise level at a very low speed, you're thinking like 5 miles an hour, is down low, it's down around 3 feet off the ground. You're not getting a lot out of the engine compartment, because you're not accelerating or decelerating, and so a lot of what you're getting is you're getting the exhaust, and you're getting the tire noise on whatever pavement, or gravel, or whatever is there. So what happens is if you have a 6-foot fence, you have a narrow space, you have, say, an 8-foot-wide panel truck, you've only got 2 feet on either side of that lane to get to the fence, or to get to the other side of the lane towards the hotel, and the hotel will be set back a little bit. So what happens is a 6-foot fence with a 3-foot source is actually a direct line of sight interruption onto the adjacent property, not only at the property line, but as you angle up towards the apartment windows on the second and third floor. So, that also adds space, in other words, now, if somebody happens to be on their ladder, you know, washing their windows on the outside, and one of these vehicles goes by, there is a, there is an interruption to the direct line of sight. So what I did was I calculated that barrier insertion loss, so I don't think there's any need for complex modeling, because it's one barrier, it's one source, one receptor, so what I'd like to do is provide you, I think you already have that, I'll give you another one, with several contents. And this is a barrier insertion loss calculation, in other words, we're putting the fence in there. The, what happens is, the combination of the intercepting fence, and then the distance to those windows, because again, you're going up, and you're going at least 25 feet, actually 28 feet of lawn, because of the fact that there's a stairwell interruption, the stairwell is back at 25 feet, and then there's like a 3-foot interruption, and the walls carry on from there. So you're looking at that point on the first part of the table, get to it, the first, the upper table is a second-story window, and that shows basically a 14-decibel loss between the interception by the barrier, and then the distance- loss between the interception by the barrier and then the distance to the window. So again, if you're, what I did, I would kind of take issue with using the Transportation Noise Manual, LMAX. The reason for that is it's a 1% value. And when you look at, I think it's Chapter 149, what is it, Section 9, 149.9A1, it talks about continuous sound. What is a continuous sound, as opposed to an immediate or intrusive sound? And what it says is basically you need a sound that lasts 30 seconds, and there have to be three of them within an hour. So when I did the calculation, I looked at the building, the building is about 62 feet long from east to west. You're running at 5 miles an hour, which means that the transit time across that building is nine seconds. So you'd actually have to have three vans or panel trucks go by in a row, boom, 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 to actually get one event as opposed to even three events. So again, putting that aside and accepting the medium truck level at an LMAX, which was what was in the Noise Consultancy's thing, and they're referencing it out of the Transportation Noise Model Manual, it's 68 decibels. I would put that much lower because I'm going for an LEQ as opposed, you know, in a series of events as opposed to a maximum event, and I think that's what your standards, Chapter 149 calls for. But putting that aside and going with the 168, if I take 68 decibels and I do the insertion loss of 14 decibels at the second-story window, now I'm down to 54. So I'm compliant with the daytime standard of 55. Same thing if I go further up, now I'm up, it's actually a greater distance, so again, there's more loss in the sound as you go over distance, and now I'm at an 18-decibel drop, 19-decibel drop, somewhere in there, and so I'm about 50 decibels, again, below the daytime standard at those two windows. So the barrier, the six-foot barrier would work for that as well. And basically, what I also wanted to point out was that the, there was some discussion as to whether or not the vehicles accelerating onto Route 9D should be included, and that's a different sound, you know, because then you have the engine revving, the engine's revving so that you can gain speed, and so that tends to be a higher sound, and you're also increasing your speed. But two things, number one is I wanted to give you a picture of the adjacent apartments, and it shows that that corner, where it's going to occur, is actually a stairwell. So there's no real, there's no living space in that particular corner.
And while this is being passed out just for the benefit of those, again, this was highlighted by our Noise Consultant, but this is an existing condition today, unmitigated, no fence, there's an existing driveway in that location permitted for a church use on the site. So we are improving the conditions over the existing or the permitted conditions at the site.
So again, if, I make the argument, number one, is that that's, by the time a car gets to that apron, to the end of the driveway and is in the apron waiting to, you know, sitting at queue and waiting to accelerate out into there, it is in the 9D right-of-way. So it is off-site. And so at that point, I would consider that to be a part of the normal ebb and flow. And again, you know, from our sound measurements, you know, when we looked at the, at the level on the northern property line, it already exceeded the daytime standard of 55.1. And also, this is not a new noise source, it's there, it could be used by the church, it was used by the church, and you have sources on 9D that are similar or heavier because of the heavy trucks. And then also you have, this is a multifamily use. And so my guess is it's probably between four and six box-style trucks or delivery vans that occur every day on this property and run along that western boundary of the one set of, for example, Building 1. And so this noise source is already there, it's not out of character with what is already occurring in the neighborhood. So in other words, you know, I think once you get off-site, and just like the patrons' voices off-site, you know, Chapter 149 would not apply. But also, when they are accelerating in that corner, you're dealing with a corner that has a stairwell. So again, it's not a living space, it's a common space within the apartments. So anyway, the basic analysis was that we came up with was that there would be no significant impact and no significant change in the environment for the daytime standard. With that, I guess I will turn it back to Taylor, unless, see if you have questions.
Do you have questions?
Well, you have questions.
Not at the moment, just so I have, actually, I do have one. This is more confirmation. So your comments here tonight are in response to the Noise Consultancy's response to your, so Noise Consultant, they submitted their responses to your report on March 24th, your report being submitted February 28th?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I have the sequence of information right. So Eric is with us tonight.
Good.
The question for you is, everything you've shared with us this evening in response to the Noise Consultancy's report, are you then going to submit in writing in turn? Meaning, what you've just shared with us tonight?
Let me, let me.
Because I want to, I want to hear from Eric tonight, but I also want to give him the opportunity and the time to respond to what you've just shared with us this evening in response to his review in turn with enough.
Understood, yes, and just for the benefit of the public, the images we handed out and will be included in our submission this week, we beg and plead, Amanda, that we could submit until Friday, but we'll coordinate that, I guess, based on what the Johns suggested, sufficient timing, that's only 72 hours from now, Yonkers turnaround timing. But we will include those in, certainly if there are any comments from their consultant that aren't related to these additional changes. We only got this study, what, Monday?
Yes.
So we've only seen it as of a couple days to kind of turn this around ourselves. So we're just trying to be responsive to that in the hope that we can work to address it, and of course, your consultant's here, so hopefully we'll be able to have a meaningful dialogue. But we're not objecting by any stretch to additional comments, but I think the, what we presented, and I think what hopefully the city's consultant will also represent, is that we're pretty far along, and our changes have further mitigated, or at least addressed, a lot of what had been presented in those reports.
Fair enough, we'll see about that. That's my point, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. I think to that end, since it's fresh, Eric is with us virtually. Eric, is there anything about what you heard this evening relative to the acoustics and noise that rises to a level of bringing it to our attention?
Well, I, first of all, I'd like to just comment, and I guess I should turn on my camera, so you're not looking at my beloved Labrador. I, a couple of comments, first of all, is that the applicant's expert discusses the vehicular sound and his utilization of the average as opposed to the maximum, and based that upon the code regulating continuous sound. But I bring the board's attention to the definition section of Chapter 149, "continuous sound," and I'm reading this from the code, "sound with the duration of one second or longer measured by the slow response of a sound level meter." So in that, in that manner, the LMAX would be an appropriate way to be looking at this. So I would just refer to that. As far as the wall attenuation study that was just presented, the findings of that, I would have to review the data that's presented. I feel that, first of all, the data that was being used by the applicant's expert was not referenced, so I don't know what source he used. I cited the Federal Highway Administration's Traffic Noise Model Manual, so I'd like to see what source data he was using, but all of those are generally at 50 feet. And so the transit of those vehicles on that driveway will be less than 50 feet from the side of the west end lofts. So taking a distance attenuation, I feel, unless, I'm missing something here, I feel is inappropriate to take additional distance attenuation. And as far as the calculation of an insertion loss of 14 decibels for the second and third floor, I think it was quoted as 14 at the second floor and 18 at the third floor, I'd have to see the calculations on that. And I would also like to see a line of sight, a line of sight analysis from the source. I'd also contend that the tire noise and the engine noise, I need to respond to the source height, engine noise at that speed is a significant issue, it's not just all exhaust, but we can, there, in the traffic noise model, there is an apportionment of the percentage of sound coming from the different, there's tire noise, there's exhaust noise, and there's engine noise, and it apportions those separately. As far as the off-site vehicular sound levels, as well as the off-site patrons walking either on the sidewalk or as well as through some of the other pathways going down to the train parking lot, those are not regulated under Chapter 149, that's accurate, but they are reasonable to, for the board to take into consideration for impacts, and impacts are what you're reviewing both in the special permit as well as the secret analysis. As far as the sound from the building, I do believe, based upon the statements that have been made, that the event space itself, where there will be amplified music, there are, there's doors between that and the open door at the front, if that representation is accurate, then I do believe that the sound levels coming from the building itself will be attenuated by the structure so long as there, the interior door and the gallery, for instance, is not opened at the same time as the front door. I do believe that the attenuation afforded by acoustic, an acoustic treatment, pane of additional acoustic glass interior to the architectural glass, I think that would be effective in remediating to the regulatory limit of below 55. The patron voices, I do agree that if you have people in the immediate front of the church, right on the steps, the front space, I should say, or at the end of the walkway on Walcott, I did some modeling of my own where I had 20 people speaking at elevated, raised voices, it would comply with the code, with the daytime code. I have in my analysis held in abeyance a discussion of plain audibility, because it has been rendered moot from a regulatory point, for regulatory compliance analysis, because the facility has stipulated to not having sound sources on the property after 9:00 p.m. As far, I see, but that, I do want to also point out, that was in my report, and that other people may not, may not be reading it, was that contrary to testimony given at the last hearing, the definition of plain audibility in the code is, let me just get this out exactly, the definition of plain audibility in 194, excuse me, 149, is "any sound that can be detected by an investigator using his or her unaided hearing faculties of normal acuity. As an example, the sound source under investigation is a sound production device. The detection of the rhythmic bass component of the music is sufficient to verify plain audible sound. The investigator need not determine the title, specific words, or the artist performing the song." Specific words, and this is now, back to my narrative, not the definition. Specific words need not be identifiable, the criteria is simply the detection of the sound. And so, you know, again, as I said, I will hold in abeyance a longer discussion about whether or not these sources will be audible inside the dwellings as, that's not regulatory, the standard that will be applied at that time. That's the sum of my comments.
Great, thank you, Eric. Around the board, any questions as it relates to noise for either the applicant or our consultant, Eric?
So is it, would you say that you've made progress towards looking at the comments from the, our noise, the city's noise consultants, but you haven't? Yes, quite, I read the general, the general drift of what was going on and a number of the specifics as to the fact that we concur in several matters now that we've, dealing with just the daytime standard.
So just to clarify, everything you've shared with us this evening was in direct response to our consultant's response to your report?
Yeah.
Hopefully that answers your question, Kevin.
Yeah, it was a combination of the two, what we did, and then.
So the point is, there is still the need for, given that you have a position on the city's reading of your report, the need for further study by the city based on what you shared with us this evening, some new information, so we're not there yet.
Yeah, I think, I think the last thing we're left, we had the venue itself, that's, we're both in agreement on that. We had the deck, we're both in agreement on that now in terms of me being able to be mitigated. We had the HVAC, we're both in agreement on that. We had the patrons' voices and elevated voices, so we're both in agreement on that. We're also in agreement on when the standard applies or doesn't apply for the patrons' voices or the vehicles in regard to Chapter 149 with regard to the right-of-way of Route 9D. So once you get into that right-of-way Route 9D, you're technically, you're off-site and you're in the flow of Route 9D. What we're basically left, and we're also in concurrence, that the hotel itself will provide a significant barrier between activities at the venue itself, on the outside of the venue, and the west end lofts. What we're down to is the northern driveway.
Yep.
That's, that's where there's more study.
Actually, Eric, Eric, are you in agree, are you in agreement with what you just heard from the applicant?
Well, I agree as far as if we're talking about, again, I go back to the distinction between strict regulatory compliance and impact analysis. Regulatory compliance only deals with things that are on the site, and that's certainly something that we have to determine right now. Impact is something that is part of the analysis for special permit of secret.
Yep.
So some of these off-site sound sources and locations are relevant for that.
Great, thank you.
Eric, can you just confirm that you're in agreement with the deck and the noise attenuating wall there? I heard you say that you were in agreement with the building based on the, adding the acoustic glass, and I don't know, when I was listening to you, I think I heard you say that you were talking about the acoustic glass being added on the interior. Does it matter whether it's on the interior or the exterior of the art glass?
I think we'd both prefer it on the interior, I would certainly prefer it on the interior. There's more space and it also is a little bit more friendly environment and controllable environment.
And then, and I think Eric said that as long as the interior and exterior doors are not open at the same time, but yeah, did you, did you confirm that you're, you've in concurrence with the analysis for the deck?
Yes, well, the, one thing that I was uncertain about was, first of all, was whether there were openings. It showed in the site plan that there were trellises there, so now that has been clarified that those will in fact be sealed. It's been clarified that there will be no amplification out on that deck, and so that, so I concur that the sounds of the voices on that deck will not exceed the permissible limit at River Ridge. As far as the window, the acoustical treatment, the acoustical treatment has to be on the inside. It also, if you seal it completely, condensation can, between an existing window and an acoustical treatment interior, there can be condensation that builds up. So you have to have it vented slightly, and venting it on the outside would be very problematic.
Okay, great, thank you, Eric. So again, still some work to be done just in our consultant's understanding your analysis, your calculations around. your calculations around the entry. That's your understanding as well?
Yes.
Yes, okay, and then, again, Eric, you raised this concept of, you know, impacts in contrast to strict regulatory compliance. I'm curious about that, and I'd like to continue to explore that, but let's put that aside for a minute, because I think we want to move on to traffic, an area where I think there still is some question, and it relates directly to this concept of impacts, right, in context of regulatory, regulatory compliance. So, with that, if you're okay, and anyone else on the board, actually, just as far as noise, our other consultants, any thoughts or input you want to add?
One question I had, there were some comments in letters we received about the fence that's now being proposed on the south property line, next to River Ridge.
Next to River Ridge? No, I've been dealing with the-
West End lots.
West End lots on the north property line.
Says six-foot-high acoustic stockhead fizz on property line, on the River Ridge side.
I wasn't analyzing that from a sound perspective, so-
There was other discussion, as you may recall, there's been discussions throughout, concerns about patrons going off-site onto adjoining properties, this is just a fence, but it has, I guess it could have the added benefit, it isn't necessary based on our report for noise abatement, as much as it is for-
So, that was my question, is it necessary for acoustic purposes, or is it strictly sort of a boundary fixer?
Yeah, basically a boundary fixer, and there's no necessity for it from an acoustical standpoint.
All right, so that can still be maintained and played.
Yep.
I was just wondering if it was necessary.
Anything on noise?
No, I think Eric's covered it, although, as we progress, all these mitigation measures should also be put into the plans itself, so they-
Oh, yeah, of course.
Yeah, these are incorporated, and just anecdotally, there is one point that I will mention and will incorporate in our supplemental submission, as we're now at the regulatory compliance, in these subjective standards, when it comes to the noise impacts, of course, the board must consider the existing conditions, and those are unabated noise impacts from existing conditions, so the applicant is proposing a use that is different than the existing use, but it is mitigating sound impacts over unmitigated existing conditions, and that would be part of an alternatives analysis in the secret process, so we would highlight that. In any event, it's been, I think, expressed by our consultant, but we'll certainly be interested in exploring that with the board's consultant.
Understood, yeah, and again, when it comes to impacts, if it can be proven that improvements on the site are taking current existing conditions and making them better, that's an impact, right, it's a positive impact to acoustics, so that's what I want to understand.
I just, I generally like to use the word mitigating when I'm talking about a positive, you know, versus impact, because the general impression of impact, particularly among the public, is always negative, oh, it's an impact.
I get it.
So, I'm trying to make that distinction in my discussion, too, is that it's a mitigating feature, which is a positive impact.
Well, so, there's the distinction, at least in my mind, which may not be that sophisticated, is there are mitigating, there are mitigating interventions that you can make to sound or noise generated by the use.
Yes.
There are also impacts mitigating, perhaps, to an existing baseline level, right?
Yes.
So, again, that's where I'm maybe improperly mixing the terms, but whether positive or negative, it's an impact, that's how I'm using it, and I understand your point in terms of mitigating measures, reducing an impact of noise.
Okay.
Right, and importantly, we have, sorry, John, we have reduced, of course, the number of patrons, we have-
You've already said that, I get it.
Corporate hours restriction, but it's big changes from where we have been, well below where we've been, so it's not just the, we haven't made minimal changes, we've really made an effort to make it consistent with the community character, sorry, John.
Got it.
I'd also like just to point out that while the north driveway does kind of exist, it's mostly on paper at this point, it, you know, it's not being used currently.
We totally agree that currently, it's not being utilized, but that's the review that the board would consider, and should, we respectfully submit should consider, is similar to what you all have considered in our application, which is the worst case. The application today could do and can do what it's permitted to do on-site, which is have a church and its operations, whether it's masses, funerals, weddings, and could utilize, so those are all considerations of the existing-
What you're saying is that in its existing state, without any mitigating measures, someone could use that corner, north corner driveway-
Correct.
And it could have a negative impact on the residents of the lots.
If that's perceived as a negative impact, drive vehicles, yes.
Did you have something, John?
Yeah, I just wanted to reinforce what the planning board's consultants said about noise, off-site, yes, it may, the way Chapter 149 is written, it may only include sites' specific sounds on the site, but the special permit conditions talk about impacts on neighbors and adjacent uses, and so I think it's very relevant, and we should continue the discussion of how people walking along Walcott or through the cemetery after the performances or the activities may impact neighbors. I think there still has, you just can't shut it off because, oh, well, trucks go along Walcott, and this is a substantially different configuration, because under the parking configurations, the management plan, almost all residents, all patrons will walk along Walcott to get to the nearest lots, and they will do in groups-
Yeah.
And all at the same time, and so you will have substantial number of people, all of a sudden, coming out of that thing at nine o'clock and walking along that sidewalk to where the main parking lots are.
That's very helpful, because that's another area where my head went when I was thinking about impacts, right? So, I understand that Chapter 149 stops the regulatory requirement at the lot line. However, there are further impacts, once they get past the lot line, just exactly what you described.
At very limited daytime hours.
I'm sorry?
At limited daytime hours.
Before nine o'clock, that's not daytime, but-
I'm speaking to the code, so, sure.
Yes, well, that's the regulatory code, that ends-
I'd love to go to that at nine o'clock, but I'm not. My son's barely asleep at that time, anyway.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification.
And I specifically wanted to bring up the cemetery, because that was one of the things in my letter that I brought up, that I, I think the path through the cemetery really has to be considered as whether it's necessary or not. Since the number of event goers have been substantially reduced, and will be primarily, according to their management plan, handled by the firehouse and the municipal lot, all in one directions, you don't have to rely so much on Beekman Street, and as the parking survey has shown, Beekman Street is starting to fill up with commuters again, as people are going back to work full-time, so the most park, most available parking for any overflow will be on the upper end of Beacon, more likely. So, it would be simpler to push all of the customers towards that direction, rather than back down through the woods in the cemetery, especially after dark, and it just seems to me it's more of an attractive nuisance for Hammond Plaza and the view, and I've never particularly liked the idea of diagonal paths through an area of gravestones, where we really don't know where people were buried in. I just think that that has to be thought completely, whether it's necessary or not. There are three pedestrian pathways between Walcott and Beekman already, so people coming to the event from the station have a place to come up Ferry Street. If they're going down to the municipal lot and it's full, and they have to go to Beekman, they have a staircase there to go down, I'm not sure that there's any advantage to having a path through the cemetery, I agree with, it should be cleaned up and maintained, but I don't think it's, it's just a place for people to gather after the event in a unsurveilled territory, where neighbors' windows are relatively close by.
Yeah, thanks, I'm curious what the applicant thinks of that recommendation.
If the board sees fit, I mean, if there's a discussion, maybe the board wants to give its opinion, and then we can tell you what we can do about it, but if the board wants us to address it, we can directly, and it might be helpful just to hear from the board, if that's, if it's in the interest of the board or concerned, we can address it. Okay.
Any thoughts? I mean, I'm personally in general agreement with John's recommendation, I think-
Okay.
If there's not a specific necessity, the idea of perhaps potentially treading over sacred ground, you know, again, if it's not a necessity, I'm inclined to agree with John's recommendation. Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I'd have to agree with that, I think, one of the things I'm concerned about is that there's no, there's never been any accommodation to improve that cemetery, am I right? There's nothing in the plan, there's no requirements, is that correct?
We're proposing to, we are improving the cemetery, or, yeah, we're removing, yeah, we're cleaning up the cemetery, that was just also a connection.
Yeah, I think Kevin is right, there's nothing specific on the site plan that says that, you said it in public statements, right.
Right, we can certainly incorporate, no matter what the path discussion ends up, the applicant is maintaining the cemetery in repair.
Well, what I'm saying is, there's no requirement in any of this.
So, yeah, I think anecdotally, this is a similar discussion we had with River Ridge before it was approved, about the park that was proposed, the applicant had come in with what was believed to be a betterment, an opportunity or a public benefit, and the board, and because of the public's opposition, whether it was Hammond Plaza or otherwise, said, no park, bad idea, get rid of the park, so the park at River Ridge was removed. This is a similar offering by the applicant, the applicant, if the board sees fit, is pleased to remove that, it was just an opportunity to provide further connection to Beekman.
Understand, just for clarity, the board is not anti-park, there were very specific reasons why that decision was made.
Sorry, I was not to say that the board suggested we should not park, the public said, no, thank you, to the park, so the applicant said, we understand, we'll move-
Thank you for that clarification.
That was not the board's suggestion.
I want to maintain our PR here.
I understand.
I want anybody thinking-
Effective advocacy by the Hammond Plaza contingency.
Writing on Facebook that somehow City Beacon Planning Board is anti-park, but thank you. Any other thoughts?
Yes, I would have to generally agree with John's position, but I would also like to see some specificity about what kind of work and restoration is going to be happening in the cemetery, it's very vague at this point, so it could, you know, at this point just mean you're going to pull some vines down, you know, or are you going to the extent of repairing and restoring, you know, headstones, monuments?
We'll resubmit that, but we did include those details in a prior submission, but I think to Mr. Clark's point, those are submissions, not the plans, so we can incorporate those into the plans, which can then also be a condition of any approval, but we will resubmit those.
I think John's point is also a response to neighbors who would rather see-
Of course.
People not traversing through their side yards.
If the objective is to get dispersed people in a timely fashion, and you don't want to have opportunities for them, like you said, to collect in areas that aren't really well surveilled or patrolled, then, yeah, why do it? I agree with John also.
We can include that, so we'll incorporate that into a supplemental submission, I did speak with the applicant, so we're pleased to remove that, especially if it's going to be a betterment for the neighbors.
Yep, okay, so, we're going to agree, including the agreement by the applicant to remove that path, and we'll reaffirm the improvements that the applicant intends to make to the cemetery. Thank you. All right, let's talk about parking. So, generally, and again, I know we have Stark on, to kind of summarize the city's review of parking, did the applicant want to add anything new at the moment?
Just here if you have questions, if you want, that's all.
At the ready.
Yep.
So, we do, however, also have our traffic committee's review as well, with, and again, I alluded to this, or I mentioned this earlier, some specific recommendations to, in whatever way possible, and this may take a little bit more conversation, deter parking on, street parking, on specific streets, Garrett, Academy, and Beacon, and so, I'm sorry, Stafford, not Garrett. And I do note that the applicant is going so far as to indicate on your plans that you are adding signage, and I want to understand, this is permanent signage or temporary signage only at time of event, so this is movable signage, if you will, stating, no parking or some language to that effect.
Yeah, I envision it as like a A-frame type sign, that you could have, that would have it posted as, in a certain area, like at the entrance to the municipal plaza, you could say, event parking with an arrow here, similarly at Tompkins Lot, and then at the entrance to River Ridge, or West End Lofts, or on those specific roadways, we could post no parking, no event parking.
Understood, I'm curious, though, given that that's not enforceable, not enforceable, what methods does the applicant have to monitor and work with your public to seek compliance?
I mean, again, that goes back to the Traffic and Parking Management Plan, the strategies that we've outlined to give to attendees of various events the information on where to park.
So, here's what I'm getting at, best-laid plans, you've got your signs out, they indicate to patrons, please don't park here. Somebody who's wise knows, it's not enforceable, you can't ticket me, city can't ticket me, I'm going to park here anyway, what are you going to do about it?
Well, that, if I may, that's not, if someone comes to your house, Mr. Chairman, and parks in your driveway-
No, no, I'm talking about on-street parking.
Oh.
That you've directed your patrons not to, this is what I understand is the intent, am I right?
No, not on-street.
Is-
In their parking lots.
For those three streets, or have I taken an intellectual leap? Help me out here. So, again, as far as I understand it, for those specific streets, you're directing patrons, please don't park here, on these streets, by movable signage, but again, this isn't enforceable by the city, it's not a no parking zone, what do you do if a patron parks there, contrary to your request?
Yeah, I mean, we can think about that a little bit further, and add something into our Traffic and Parking Management Plan to address that specific item.
So, I only, again, this is like all great, best-laid plans-
We are prospecting, nodding eyes, your consultant has highlighted very specifically, our mitigation measures will not have a materially or specific, I know that's not what you want me to say, but I have to for the-
I understand, you have a job to do, and so do we.
Effectively.
What I'm getting at is, and again, this is because concerns have been raised, not only by neighbors, but by the city, that best-laid plans can sometimes go to shit, right? And so then, you're then having an impact on the community.
We, if I may also offer, Mr. Chairman, we've also mentioned that there will be post-monitoring offered, pro offer by the applicant, so any of the applicant's conditions and the site conditions are being considered and monitored post-approval, so these are all things that will be considered by the applicant and have been incorporated into this plan, so it's not just now, it's not just best-laid plans, it's put that into action and make it happen.
That, fair, I understand that, but then there's that painful period of, oops, this didn't work, people in the-
If I may, Mr. Chairman, this-
I'm not done. People in, people in the community are suffering the consequences of those best-laid plans not going to plan, you know?
We often hear this discussion in other applications when it deals with signage, an applicant will say, I need this sign to tell somebody to stop at my restaurant. After a couple months, when people learn where the restaurant is, that sign may have less effectiveness or efficacy, but, again, this is similar to those conditions. Yes, this is a new proposal, but that church has been there longer than most any buildings in the city.
I don't know, I don't know that the church necessarily engendered a degree to on-street parking that we're potentially talking about here.
Well, then, it didn't have any parking-
And the church also didn't have-
It did have, it did have parking on-site before the development of the-
No, on-street parking, on-street, I'm talking about not on-site, on-street.
Right, we're talking about off-site, on-street, in residential streets.
I think what you're saying is the church didn't engender overflow parking on Stafford-
That's exactly what I said.
But it would today, it would today, under existing conditions, based on the site constraints, for the permitted use, so that's not, looking at it in 1700, right, there wouldn't have been cars, but to say that today, there wouldn't be an impact from a church onto the permitted use, is not, that's not-
Again, this church has not been active for years, and-
That's not the standard.
Hasn't been, you, listen, I understand, you're an attorney, you're, you know, beholden to the language and the laws. We're the planning board, we're beholden to, again, sometimes unintended consequences that the laws don't take into account, that's my point.
We will look further into those.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
We will look further into the committee's comments.
Can you stay on this topic and weave in this, this-
You're welcome to.
Well, no, I think it's germane, so we have a memo from the Traffic Safety Committee that says a couple of things that are pertinent to this conversation. One of them is that the committee specifically recommends against the use of Rhombout Avenue, Beacon Street, or Stratford Avenue for overflow parking. Then, it says, "The committee had some concerns regarding overflow parking into surrounding residential neighborhoods, but found that a clause allowing for the planning board to revisit and review issues that come up at a later point would be an adequate method of addressing these concerns." So, can we revisit for a second what mechanisms would be available for us to do that? Because it's, you know, again, it goes right to what you're saying, if it doesn't work, then we have a statement from the police representative saying, "Well, we'll see."
I think part of that is the applicant referenced as the post-occupancy monitoring plan that has been, you know, discussed at prior meetings and is in the materials submitted by the applicant, that post-occupancy, the applicant will be required to demonstrate through studies submitted to the city that everything is working according to plan. Those studies could be reviewable, but we could put that in the resolution, that those studies are reviewable by the planning board, for the planning board to determine whether or not everything is working according to plan, and if it's not, something else would have to be reworked.
And to that, are we the most expedient way of doing, of remedying that if it should happen, or is it better to be remedied immediately by the building official, or, you know?
I can also add, I attended the Traffic Safety Committee meeting, I can add that it was discussed that we would actually go back to the Traffic Safety Committee to discuss any changes based on the post-monitoring as well. I think they were kind of alluding to that in the last paragraph of their letter, I don't think they specifically said it, but that was something that we did discuss when we were at that meeting.
Yeah, they kind of put it back on the planning board to have flexibility in addressing parking issues as they develop, once operations at the facility begin. I don't know if that is the most expedient way to remedy stuff.
You're using two terms that are oxymorons, expedient and planning board. I don't know, is there-
We have had combinations where the building department, or even council, or otherwise, have been involved in these post-monitoring discussions, so as to not always implicate the planning board in having to address parking discussions.
I don't mind being implicated or taking the responsibility for it, but, you know, like you said, if it does turn out to be a problem, you want to remedy it quickly.
Yeah, no.
Right, if the building inspector determines that it's sufficient, or something to that effect, or that this further mitigation was implemented, then, okay, but if not, then it would have to appear before the planning board for modification.
If it's not remediable, does that mean the special use permit gets revoked?
That all depends on how the resolution is crafted and what conditions you impose. Because remember, we talked, or in the training session, about the fact that one of the provisions in your code for special use permits is that if the applicant does not comply with the conditions of approval for a special use permit, the building inspector has the authority to revoke that approval. So, if, for special use permits, it always is very important, if you are approving a special use permit, crafting your conditions appropriately, based on, to tailor it, no pun intended, to really, you know, make sure that it meets the proposed use and meets all the parameters that you find acceptable, that the applicant would have to live within.
Okay, I'd also like to add that the temporary signage has, it's been noted by your neighbors that they're not interested in having temporary signs put up on their property, and also, how temporary are your signs, if you're, like, if they're half a week every week?
Can I just mention, the applicant would not be permitted to put any temporary signage or permanent signage of any kind-
Well, they just mentioned-
-on somebody else's property, so if those signs, those signs would have to be in the right of way, and we'd have to double-check and make sure that that's permitted under the city code.
The main thing is that, you know, from an engineering perspective, or a project success perspective, you really don't want to go into any of this stuff with a, "I hope this will work," and, you know, and-
That's exactly my point.
If it falls flat on its face, we'll have to do something.
And again, there's the difference between it working in, working in theory based on the law and being compliant with the law, but we all, we all know, although you may not agree, the law is not always perfect.
Right, and we've submitted a report that our consultant and your consultants have said works, and what we're trying to do is further, although the consultants, the professional engineers have said, these things, when implemented, work to address the concerns, then if we're adding a post-monitoring, because the board and the public have mentioned, well, it may not, so we've added another layer of enforceability and efficacy, so as to make this have a belt to the suspenders that we've already incorporated into multiple plans that have been reviewed by your consultants.
Right, and then, again, when the consultants say these things work, they work as it relates to the regulatory requirements, right?
That may be true of the noise study discussion and decibels and things that affect-
Well, it's the same with parking.
Parking and the traffic is simply like our consultant, they said, "The numbers, your numbers work."
And we've reduced them significantly, right.
They have not said that your, you know, management-
So, we can, we can, we can go back and forth on this.
Yes, you can.
I think we've made our point.
I think those issues have been, though, this is a new conversation related to the, new old conversation related to other residential areas that we're going to relook at again, but we are trying to incorporate that through post-monitoring, which would otherwise really still be involved in our event plan, and I think it's-
Understood.
-reiterative about their comments.
Sorry, go ahead.
And I'm just, I think I asked this before, but just to confirm, we have no mechanism to enforce non-resident parking prohibitions on those streets, so, so we don't have that, that remedy is not available to us, otherwise we could just-
Right, if it's public parking, we can't say, "This particular, you know, entity can't utilize public parking, whereas other members of the public can."
Yep. Anything else you wanted to add, Stark? If you're not asleep already?
No, I'm not asleep, this is a very riveting conversation. No, nothing to add, I think we hit the nail on the head when we're talking about the management plan that they've prepared, and how they need to monitor it after they've opened, is a necessity for the success of their management plan. In regards to the discussion about on-street parking and illegality of the matter, I don't know whose purview that falls under to determine whether people can park, or like the legality of parking on-street, so-
Okay.
I can really opine on that matter.
Thank you. So, we talked a lot about noise, we talked a lot about parking, just before we go to the public, any other items in your review of this month that you want to highlight?
No.
Yep, Mr. Russo?
No, just cleanup on the plans, but one thing I was thinking about is they're dispersing people from their site, moving them to these parking lots. Is there any mechanism to make sure these people are dispersing from these parking lots? You know, they all gather here at City Hall, they're right next to West End Lofts, and now we wind up with the noise issue again.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, Bruce, just curious, do you have any thoughts on any of these two subjects that you wanted to add? And just to give you the opportunity, if not, no worries.
Yeah, again, it comes back to what the board is eventually, you know, where you guys take it, it's going to be, again, what items are put into the, you know, the special use permit, and it's going to be how we're going to enforce this. You know, we'll have to have all the discussions on it prior, as you get closer to coming to a decision on the process.
Fair enough, thank you. Lynn, do you have something?
Do we have any site visit considerations to discuss tonight at any point?
That was my next, well, let's, let's take the opportunity now, there's a couple of other sort of administrative things including that I want to get to, but we may want to now go to the public, since we are still in open public comment. I'm going to, I'm going to ask, so we've received a number of letters, again, please note that those letters have all been read, they've all, by the board, they've all been entered into the record. I'm going to ask that if you have submitted a letter, please know, it's noted, it's read, it's logged, it's part of the record, there's no need necessarily tonight to read that letter or otherwise repeat yourself by doing so, and as well, if you have come to speak with us earlier, because I see some familiar faces, it's not necessary to repeat in any detail what you've shared with us in the past, because again, we're listening, we hear you, and it's all in the record, so, and I'm saying this in the interest of, you know, time and efficiency, trust me, we hear you, you don't need to repeat yourself, and if you would like to, just, you know, briefly state either your support or otherwise, that's fine, but again, please refrain from repeating yourselves, it's just not in, not in the best interest of time. Thank you. Your name and address, please.
Clark Edman, 2 Wilson Street. So, yes, I'm not repeating myself as a relationship to, I thought, the train station, the location of the church, and its importance, and I rescind that, because I was unaware of the city's master plan about Main Street development down, taking Main Street down to Beakman, and, and apparently, this is a well-studied matter from the citizens of this city, they've endorsed that plan, so it's that comment I've made in the past is no longer appropriate. The idea of having, was it three minutes or five minutes, Mr. Chairman?
Let's do three.
We're doing three today? Okay, no problem. So, highest and best use would indicate, if I was really hurt, you know, really hurt as an investor in this property, I would probably see if the Episcopal Church wouldn't move in, and I would, if not, I would go ahead and develop the Church of Civil Justice. And it would be a strange church, because it would also have events, and it would have events 12 hours a day, and be protected under existing usages, because their theme would be a discussion about civil justice, and that would be their religion, and they would have a hotel, and they would have events. So, when we talk about mitigating versus other perspectives, one, it's the city's ambition, I would imagine, to protect the history of the structure. And to protect the history of that structure, it is also the city's best interest to promote commercial development, and to collect the maximum amount of taxes per lineal foot of curbing possible to make the city more affordable for its residents. So, when you weigh the opportunity for the landowner to exercise his property rights, controls, controls as to the environment, and how it's affected by the tenant, by the owner, is the city's leverage and the cry of the neighbors against commercial development and against cultural development in this city, given the fact that this city has defined its relationship with the train, that I don't agree with, but that's, that's pretty much the trend. I, there's no reason for the city not to grant the application.
Thank you.
Hello.
Evening.
My name is Donna Mickelson, excuse me, I live at 1 Liam Drive, my porch is right next door to the parsonage, so I can speak truthfully and honestly about what happens there. I can tell you that that road is not just on paper, that little driveway next door is used, I use it quite a bit, I've seen cars go, it's, I've been there for almost four years now. I can tell you that the most I hear from the church are the church bells, which I hope will continue every Sunday at 10:00. I wrote down what I wanted to say. It's a sad reality that the church couldn't sustain itself, but that is a reality, it's happening in many communities all around. When Gavin bought the place, I looked him up, I contacted him, I asked for a tour, I wanted to know what's up, who's this guy, what's happening right next door, and he put my mind at ease, I thought it was a great concept, I thought, wow, if anything's going to happen, if it's not religious, let it be art, great. I think it's great for Beacon. Of course, I think they've been very, very accommodating, asking them to end performances at 8:30 is kind of outrageous, I think, from a venue standpoint, but I think that they're willing to do it, shows their eagerness and willingness to do this project. Just in terms of the noise, the most noise is from 9D, I don't sit on my front porch because of the noise from 9D, not from the church, there's also constantly people walking by from the train, so, you know, will an activity at the church make a big impact? I don't know, I mean, every Saturday and Sunday, just like Main Street's busy, my front, I don't sit there, because I don't want people, you know, talking to me, or, you know, I literally can't hear myself think. So, you know, if you bought or are renting on that strip right next to the church, you didn't pick a place that's deep in the woods, you picked a place on 9D in an urban area, so, I mean, it kind of goes with the territory. I think that, you know, in terms of rationale, I think it's important, like the previous gentleman mentioned, the history of the building and the importance of preserving that history, it's been around for 160 years, it's seen communities come and go, and I hope 100 years from now, it's going to still be there, and you have right now a willing custodian who's willing to maintain it and make it nice and beautiful and create art inside of that space, I think it'd be silly to miss that opportunity because of a few voices, because that's not representing the whole community. I, for one, would be happy to see a venue there, I'd be happy to see jobs for people happening there, I think it's a great opportunity, and I think you should give it your consideration. Thank you.
Sorry, where do you, where do you live again?
I live right next door, at 1 Liam Drive, West End Loft.
West End Loft, thank you.
Yeah.
John Bono, 10 Stratford Avenue, Stratford. The, I see a pattern developing in this, you know, we, first, they were talking about this is going to be a conference center, and this and that, and we've gone from a conference center, which usually a conference center would be operating five days a week, down to two days a week. I, what I see coming, in my own opinion, is it not being a conference center, it's going to end up being a venue center, which is going to end up being a nightclub, okay? I think the rules are going to change after a year or two, I don't think it's going to stay at 8:30, I think it's going to end up being 10:30, 11:00, or whatever happens, but I just see this pattern developing. You know, as far as the parking, I don't know what to do, you know? We live on Stratford Avenue, it's going to end up being a parking lot, I'm sure, but I don't, I don't see truth in what everybody says, okay? Otherwise, we'd still be five days open for a conference center, so we can make money, you know, I mean, that's the whole name of the game, is making money, not being open, it's dollars and cents. Otherwise, why even have a place open, why even anybody go to work? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Teresa Craft, yeah, I've stood here before and I'll stand here again.
Just, Teresa, don't repeat yourself, that's all I'm asking.
I'll try not to. One of the many documents in tonight's project package is a 16-page site plan sheet, set sheet, filled to the brim with detailed information that will take a full-time, professional team to decipher into layman's terms. Even given a full two extra weeks to read and prepare for tonight's meeting, I doubt most have read every single word or looked into every minute detail. I am still opposed to this build-out, like so many who have sent pleading letters, spoken out at public hearings. These surrounding neighbors, along with numerous city residents in Beacon, do not want to see this large-scale operation come to fruition at this wrong location. It's good, you know, everybody likes a party, but not there. Even the city's own consultant, the noise consultancy, continues to have many issues that have not been addressed with the applicant's sound mitigation, and listed even more concerns. Now, one of the applicant's quick-fix solution is putting up a major fence which will block daylight, skylines, flora, and fauna, along with the beloved view of that historic church. I think your workshop tonight by Jennifer hit the nail on the head when she read section- nail on the head when she read Section 223-18 special use permit. For those in the room who were not here, it read, "The city council or planning board may authorize the issuance of a permit, provided that it shall find that all the following conditions and standards have been met." I'm trying to read to fit into my three minutes. A) The location and size of the use, the nature, hours, and intensity of the operations involved in or conducted in connection with, the size of the site in relation to it and the location of the site with respect to the streets giving access to it are such that it will not conflict with the appropriate and orderly development of the site and the existed permitted uses on the adjacent blocks. B) The location, nature, and height of the buildings, walls and fences, and the nature and extent of the landscaping on the site are such that the use will not conflict with the existing permitted use on adjacent blocks and will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development use of the adjacent land and buildings. C) Operations in connection with any special use will not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibrations, or other characteristics in Article 5 than would be the operations of any permitted use not requiring a special permit. D) Parking areas will be of adequate size for the particular use and properly located and suitably screened from adjoining residential uses. The entrance and exit drives shall be laid out so that as to achieve maximum safety and use and not cause unreasonable traffic congestion or create a traffic hazard. If this board is to follow the city's own code, I think this project is a stretch at that location. Like most of these overdevelopment projects that you're passing through like chiclets, the city of Beacon must stop giving applicants the right to include our tax-paying, public parking lots spaces that are designated for all residents and visitors of Beacon, many who will not be attending any of these venues. Stop giving false hopes to these projects. As proposed, it still offers too many negative impacts on the quality of life. Please say no based on our own city code. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty Wall, 8 River Ridge Court. And I would also like to say that we do not want signage on our property for River Ridge. You've said that, and we do not want signage on our property. For over a year and a half, my husband and I have been attending these meetings to listen and voice our concerns about the proposed prophecy theater development, which would be located directly next to River Ridge View, our home for the past two and a half years, and where we intend to live for the foreseeable future. We never expected that we would need to devote so much of our time attending zoning and planning board meetings, reading documents, meeting with the applicant, our neighbors, city council representatives, the building inspector, and lawyers, just to simply retain our right to the quiet enjoyment of our home. But we have done that, and we will continue to voice our concerns. Once again, this month, there were over 40 letters submitted to the planning board, all expressing concern about this project. And there would be many more if we had the time and energy to speak to additional residents who live in the immediate vicinity. To date, there have been over 350 petition signatures and nearly 200 letters of opposition. I have stated my many concerns in a letter that I submitted as a resident and a joint letter that I signed as a representative of River Ridge, along with representatives of The View and Hammond Plaza. So, I don't want to be redundant tonight. But for the past two months, we have been asking for the applicant to please define what an event is. Could there be festival events, where he could hold multiple events in a day, so instead of having 150 people on the property, there could be 600 or more in the course of one day? We would like the planning board to please ask the applicant to answer this question tonight. He surely must know if this is part of his vision. This is another potential loophole that needs to be addressed. We were taken a little aback by the Traffic and Safety Committee suggesting they would take a wait-and-see approach on the parking overflow. The whole purpose of this process is to address issues prior to approval. We are also very concerned about a new proposed fence on our border that the independent noise consultant has stated will have no effect on sound received at our second or third-floor windows. Basically, our residents will be staring out their front windows only to see a six-foot fence which will now block all of their views of the church and the street. That is not acceptable. In closing, I would just say that the applicant and his attorneys have managed to find many loopholes which have kept these meetings going for over 18 months. But as we have pointed out, multiple sections of City Zoning Code 223-18 provide you the ability to make a positive declaration and allow the 400 or so residents who live in the surrounding area the peaceful existence that they desire and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Bloom, I live at The View, which is one of the two adjacent residential complexes that were completely and utterly ignored by the sound study. I did submit a letter, so I'm not going to read the letter again. I'm just going to give some observations that I came up with tonight. One is the term existing sound conditions. Right now, that equals peaceful and quiet. So, any attempt to equate what's going on now with what they're going to bring is, I would say, a specious argument. I've asked numerous times, who's funding this? Never got an answer. Is it a Russian oligarch? Is it a local with a conflict of interest? We still don't know. One thing that struck me in the last meeting was the applicant invoking their rights under the secret process. I appreciate that that has been done to a T so far, and we appreciate it. We are also aware, keenly aware of our legal rights as well in this matter. And we hope that you do not approve this project for all the reasons that have been stated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just mention one thing? I know the funding question has come up a lot, and like, who are the investors and who's funding? That's not something for the planning board to inquire about. Again, going back to our training session, the, you know, planning board's jurisdiction is about the use of the property, not the user.
Even if it's a Russian oligarch, not our purview.
Austin Laurie, I live on 6 Academy Street. So, I can pretty much throw a baseball to this venue and hit it on the fly pretty much from my front porch. And, you know, in general, I support this project. I think it would benefit the city of Beacon by providing our local shops and businesses much-seated hotel and event space, which is kind of lacking in Beacon right now. We don't have many hotels at all in the city, and I don't think there's many event spaces either. So, I think this will help bring more people and more out-of-towners to Beacon. And I kind of wonder what the alternative is, if we don't convert it into something because the church isn't active right now. And, you know, having someone to come in and take this space and preserve it and make it into something useful that benefits the community would benefit all of us. It'll benefit all local businesses and in turn, the residents who enjoy those businesses and enjoy the shops. So, I think it's a great proposal, and I really hope it goes forward. So, thanks.
Thank you.
I scratched anything that I submitted in writing, so I'm going to keep it really brief.
I appreciate that. Again, thank you all for your consideration.
Of course.
I don't know if you all know, there's times, and it's not just this application, but we're here till 1, sometimes 1:30 in the morning.
Yep.
So, thank you. Any consideration, we really appreciate it.
My comments relate to any materials that came in after the arranged meeting from two weeks ago. So, I just wanted to flag that while the applicant may repeatedly claim its background is in the nonprofit arts world, this is clearly not a 501(c)(3) arts project. This is Prophecy Theater LLC. So, clearly, the intention is to create a business that will turn a profit by operating night and day, 365 days a year. We all know that Beacon has the potential to become the most thriving and beautiful city in Duchess County, creating opportunities for all. We are all in support of that. But Beacon's reputation could be quickly sullied if it sacrifices its residential communities for commercial enterprises that will destroy their quality of life. So, I make a special plea that, you know, please don't kill our very special and unique golden goose. Primarily, I wanted to question why The View and Hammond Plaza were not considered in any of the studies here, both the traffic study and the acoustic studies. While we sit at the back of this property, it does overlook us, and we're pretty sure that our quality of life is going to change significantly. So, we would like to be considered alongside West End Lofts and River Ridge Views. You know, we're just a few feet from the property. We'll experience the same noise and disturbance everybody else will. I was pleased to hear the feedback on the planned path in the cemetery. You know, we appreciate this. I noticed that the Traffic and Safety Committee recommended that patrons would be encouraged to park on Beakman Street. So, I was glad that John Clark said that the pathway through the cemetery is a potential nuisance for neighbors rather than a necessity for parking and overflow. I'd also flag that Beakman Street is the only paid-for parking option in this whole proposal. So, surely, people are going to seek out the free parking options that don't require a walk up the hill as well. So, I think that's something that everybody should take into account. And really, just to finish, you know, we're a quiet residential neighborhood. I don't care that 9D is there. We really don't hear anything. So, please let us and the wild animals that enjoy our hill and graveyard continue to live in peace. It's all we ask. Thank you. I wanted to, we've been speaking with Jennifer, and we had made an invitation at the last meeting for any of the board members that wish to walk our property, to really get a firsthand view of how close we all are. And we wondered if you would like to take us up on that.
Yeah, we appreciate that. We've discussed it, and, you know, we do do site visits. When we do as a group, there are certain things that we have to be really careful of. We can't act as a body. And we, you know, we actually form a quorum when we are more than four of us, even if we're sitting in a bar together.
Right.
So, we've got to be really careful with that. There is the option for individual members to tour individually, and that sometimes helps with scheduling. So, that was one component that, once we're done with public hearing, we'll sort of work through that. We appreciate the invitation, thank you. And we'll figure out how best to approach that.
That's great. Thank you. And we're very happy to accommodate individual meetings.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Alex Rivers, I live at 2 Academy Street. I'll make a quick, I've spoken before. Just want to bring up to a new matter that I thought about. This is a church. Church is meant for congregations. It's meant for people to come together, and that's what this project is proposing, please. And I know the concern is, in what manner does this affect the neighborhood? But I think that, for me, feeling like this property, which you, as a board, are overseeing its best usage, that if this project does not go through, then the only viable option beyond that would be converting it to condos. And that would be a travesty. That'd be the worst possible outcome for this building. It is not being used in its fullest now. Sunny service is there. It's nice to see service. I know some of my neighbors attend. But this way, it can still be used as a venue for people to congregate together in a community. It is artistic. I know what West End Lofts has, was artist spaces meant to help subsidize. I think its best use would be to be used as a venue. So, I'm very favored in this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve Jaffe, 8 River Ridge Court. It's my understanding that when River Ridge was being planned, it was important that the design worked very closely with the church and complemented it as well. The landscaping was designed to be open and inviting, and in fact, for the whole place to be almost as one. You can't, if you don't know where the property line is, you really can't tell where the property line is. I also think, I imagine, the planning board was supportive of that idea at the time, or maybe even wanted it to happen. To put up a fence between the two properties would do precisely what the city did not want us to do. It would destroy the openness and the sense of community that we want and Beacon wants. I guess now it's not an acoustic fence. On the plans, it was an acoustic fence, so I guess that's not the point anymore. Just a little furthermore, the applicant has owned this property for two years, and in those two years, the church building has continued to deteriorate. It's still an active church. Sunday, there are services, and there's lots of kids running around on the lawn and all. That's great. Whenever it's windy, the steeple loses shingles. The shingles on the steeple are slate, and we find them embedded in the dirt. I mean, it's like they're spears. It's not safe there, particularly on a windy day. The point that I'm trying to wring out is, if there's no care now, after two years, for safety, why should we trust the applicant to be a good steward of the church in the future and to be a good neighbor? I think this project just does not belong here. There's so many issues, so many, I mean, it's sort of like clear. It just, it doesn't fit. Anyway, that's my feelings for tonight. Thanks so much for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jane Riley, Stratford Avenue. So, I've been listening to everything tonight, and I understand that there's a management plan, and I'm concerned about who's actually going to manage that. And I know that there's been accommodations, but there's still so many issues. And one of the things I want to comment on is that we're going to have a venue where there is music, there's going to be dancing, and there's going to be liquor in this small area. And I am truly concerned about the behavior of the people who are going to be attending this venue and how respectful they're going to be within that property and to the neighborhood. I know I live on Stratford Avenue. I know that there's a concern about parking, but this is also my neighborhood. I have to contend with the speeders on 9D. And I've lived with that, and I've made phone calls, and I don't really see anything happening. So, what's going to make me feel comfortable that this place is going to be managed? And I just don't have that sense of comfort. I'm not trying to cause any problems. I'm not trying to make anyone feel bad, but I don't have a lot of faith in this. I don't support it. I don't want it. I think if this is supported, the city's going in the wrong direction. That's about all I can say. And I'm very concerned about the liquor license. I said it, I'm going to say it twice. You're going to have these people listening to music and dancing and cars coming and going. We don't need it in that residential area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please.
Carolina Willow, I came straight from work today. Just to voice another objection to the proposed fence that was placed on that map with the last submission. I did question it in my letter, but now it was just proven that there's no acoustic benefit. So, right now, it's just a six-foot barrier on my front porch. So, just an objection to that. And also, on the map, it says that it would be on the property line, but it's my understanding it should be within their property line. I don't know if you guys know the answer to that.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Did you want to go? Did you want to go? Okay. Okay.
My name's Lauren Walling, and I live at 829 Walcott Avenue. And I am one of the owners of the project, and I'm also one of the financial investors in the project. And there are so many things that I want to respond to, but I have a very short prepared statement. And I think that what I want to speak to is people really knowing and understanding who we are. I'm not going to stand up here and talk about all of these details because I don't add much to that conversation. But I just want to share a little bit with this group and with you, and I know some of you for almost 20 years now, and some of the people in this room, who I am as a person, since I'm the first person now to talk to you, independent of Gavin. So, I've worked in the nonprofit sector for 24 years. I've been an art teacher for 15 and an arts administrator for nine at the Women's Studio Workshop in Kingston, New York. Women's Studio Workshop is an artist residency program, and I am a practicing artist. I am therefore in the business of creating an arts community and have spent decades creating artistic opportunities for other people. So, I know what I'm doing. More importantly, I have lived in Beacon for 19 years. I moved here shortly after Dia and have been here I moved here shortly after DIA and have been here to see all of this change. Beginning in 2005, my mother and I ran one of the only two-bed-in breakfasts in town before Airbnb even existed, and before the Roundhouse, and before everything else that came. We were part of the newly invigorated tourist movement here during a time when development in Beacon was just beginning to emerge, and the financial crisis of 2008 had Main Street business owners hanging on by a thread. Small business owners like me banded together, working towards the collective improvement of Main Street and the financial well-being of this town. We paved the way for the development that came. We paved the way. You're welcome. The Beacon we lived in today, that we live in today, is much different, and the pain of development exhaustion is real. I know this, and I've experienced it, as I've watched all these new three- and four-story buildings being built on Main Street. I've been part of that process, not as a builder or developer, but as a community member. At this point, I don't feel there's much left to say about the project that hasn't been said before. I'm not going to say anything that's illuminating. All I want the community, and that's everybody here, is to know who we are, which is not a group of faceless developers from New York City and beyond who don't have an emotional investment to our neighborhood and our community. We are homeowners, business owners, Beacon taxpayers, and mothers and fathers. We have presented the community with a project that is inclusive, viable, creative, and serves the greater public while paying taxes. While paying taxes. The church, for example, did not do those things. We have found a highest and best use, and I love that someone mentioned that earlier, highest and best use, for an extremely large historic property, and yes, the project will make money, because who would ever take on buying such a building if it wouldn't, besides a nonprofit, which by the way, is a business, I run a nonprofit, that doesn't pay taxes. Given its size, I really want to ask you, what other possible use could exist that would support itself financially and have a positive impact on the community? We've actually asked ourselves that question, like, what is left to do? We bought this thing, we had a plan, what are we going to do with it now? And you know, I don't want to get in the weeds of it, but I have a lot of experience with negotiation. No one's walking out of here getting everything they want. Karen, it's never going to happen, to your point about the parking, people are going to park there, that's what they're going to do. We can put a management plan in place, it's going to happen. And John, to your point, you're raising questions, you're saying, but what is the pragmatic reality? Yes, there are things that are going to happen that are outside of control, of our control, but what else do you expect to happen on this site? Having said that, now I'm feeling kind of emotional, I'm sorry, it's really been a long few years. We hear you, I really hear what you're saying, and I am, I care about your experience living here. I do, I've lived here a long time, I know a lot of people here, I'm not a faceless person. Every single month, we're revising our business plan and adapting what we can to meet the desires of the community. From day one, Gavin Hecker has been present and straightforward with the team's intentions. He is earnest, sincere, and very committed to the project, and if he were not, we could have sold it by now. He really does care about the community and the neighbors that will be impacted most closely by the project. Like me, he is an arts worker and knows how to build community around the arts. He has worked with our attorney and the city attorney to drastically reduce the occupancy and hours, even though we have a structure built to accommodate 300 people. 300 people, 165 years. Please just tell us what is left to do to move on with this process, and trust that we are thoughtful, reasonable, and community-minded people who can build a project without having deleterious effects on local residents. We have brains, we hear you, we're not going to ignore your needs. We have a strong vision for what is possible, and firmly believe this project will ultimately serve the community. And that's all, thank you.
Not a Russian oligarch.
I think, I think you have another member of the public, thank you.
This is like, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure Amanda could hear your name and your address, please.
Rachel Rifkin, River Ridge, and I hate, this is, no, I don't hate anything.
And I'm sorry, could you just speak into the microphone?
Yes, I'm sorry, the microphone, I don't hate, I just, I can't believe I'm always the last one closing, because this is like, for me, experienced public hearing, anyway, nice to see everybody, happy spring. I continue to not believe in prophecy theaters, proposal, proposal or management plan. Before I start, I would, so let me just try to go off my speech, but before I start, I don't know if it's legal for the applicant to be holding religious services at the church, because he has been for the past several Sundays from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. There's been religious services, so I don't know if he has permits in place to do that, if that's even legal, and I don't even know if he has liability insurance for that, and also, it's wear and tear on his own asset. So, if we're starting on that, in terms of monitoring, sorry, so if we're starting on that way, which I don't know, if he has the right, he has the right. But he is, that's how we're starting out. That being said, everything still remains confusing and based on assumptions. Noise, quality, just everything, it's on assumptions. We've been going through this for the past year and a half, and the, if you go to his planning studies or business model, the three attendants are also, the three parking attendants are also cleaning services, whatever they are, they act as like five jobs, those three parking attendants. I think it is nice that the traffic committee recommends no parking on Ramout or Stratford Avenue, but how will this be implemented? So, at the end of the day, this is what it's all about. The local residents, the police, the building inspectors, who, I did have the pleasure to meet with our new building inspector in a different venue, when it wasn't, where it was more relaxed, so, but at the end of the, at the end of the day, we'll all be responsible for this, and you, as this planning board, be more responsible, because you'll be holding that six-month, or whatever it's called, the quote, post-monitoring period, that's all going to be upon you. We, as the residents, just have to call and annoy everybody, which is not something we want to do. So, that's upon you, and I would like to thank two people here, Mr. Clark, for recommendation on not to open that cemetery, because I've sat, I've sat, I've sat behind you all for 1.5 years, asking about that, and due to, per the New York State Board of Cemeteries, it is illegal to disturb a tombstone. Let's keep those who have passed, so let's just keep those who have passed and honor them, I got it, I got to wrap it up, I got it. So, I thank you, Mr. Clark, for that, because that's impossible to monitor. At the end of the day, this is going to be more upon you as the board. And I would also like to thank Mr. Palmer for pointing out one of the most important things about calamities and potential liabilities, because I forget in which meeting, Mr. Palmer, you said, it's like, you can't always control everything, it's like a balloon coming down from the sky, but lately, but our country just, I think, put down two balloons from the sky, so that just shows we should look at things that we never know as, so thank you all, and that's it.
Thank you.
And balloons can be shot from the sky. And to honor our country and, yeah, hello.
God bless America.
Oligarchs aside, these services, are they invoking a benevolent deity or some kind of dark egregore? I think there's probably a couple of us who know that.
Anything else?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll go on to our next agenda item. Is there anything, something?
Site visit?
Oh, yes.
So, just to kind of expedite, my recommendation would be to set a date for a group site visit.
Yeah.
If you end up, four or more of you end up using that date, great, we have it on the books. Alternatively, you can schedule individual visits for groups of less than four.
Okay, that's great, and short of doing that here and boring everyone while we look at our calendars, is that something?
It does have to be scheduled.
Oh, we do.
It's under your board rules.
That's right.
Group site visits have to be scheduled.
Damn lawyers.
Okay, any specific date come to mind that is most convenient? Look, if I'm going to be there, it needs to be a Friday, so, a Friday afternoon preferably. I guess we'll all look at our calendars.
How about this Friday?
That, this Friday I can't do, sorry.
I can't do the second, I can't do the next Friday.
There we go.
Yeah, and look, it doesn't need to be all of us, if, you know.
You can do individual.
Exactly, you can do individual, so, why don't we, just for the ability to have time to plan, let's just set April 14th Friday at, what, 4 o'clock?
And does that work with?
That works.
I'm staying hedge nodding. 4 o'clock.
4:14, 4 o'clock, that's easy to remember.
4:14, 4.
4:14, 14.
Good? All in favor? Do we need to act on this, or we're just establishing this in the calendar?
By consensus.
Yeah, great.
And can we also see the prophecy theater property at the same time?
Yeah, we'll be there.
Oh, you're going to be there, right.
I won't, the applicant will be there.
Well, you're not going to be there.
4:14, 4 o'clock.
Yeah, April 14th at 4:00 p.m. Amanda, would you mind putting that in the city calendar? Thank you. Okay.
Well, we can talk about that, so if it is scheduled as a public meeting, it's an open public meeting, the only reason we would do that is if there's going to be substantive discussions, which I would recommend against.
Yep.
But ultimately, it's your choice on who you allow onto your property. So, same with the site visit on 1113 Walcott, the applicant does not have to let members of the public onto the property.
My understanding was, is that, right, we'd go see, we'd go see the neighboring properties.
We're welcoming anybody.
Doesn't necessarily mean, doesn't necessarily mean these guys are going to be there, but then you guys will be available and you'll be at your property.
Anybody can come 1113.
You'd like to go on both.
Pop over. We'll just pop over, like good neighbors. All right, great, so that's established. I'm going to request a two-minute break, if you want to go get coffee, please feel free.
Ooh, fuck.
Okay, so, we're going to move on to the second agenda item, that being continuation of a public hearing on an application for subdivision approval, 12 Highland Place, submitted by Lori Joseph Builders, and that's your cue, Jennifer.
Yes, um, I think we have a new procedure. So, 12 Highland Place, we are still in our public hearing, it's a continued public hearing. The board has issued its secret determination, a negative declaration, and at your last meeting, you did direct the preparation of a resolution of approval for the subdivision, which, if you recall at your last meeting, was changed from a five-lot subdivision to a four-lot subdivision. So, with the applicant's materials tonight, we have the four-lot subdivision documented, you have the plat to review, it was just verbally announced at the last meeting, and you do have, in the event that you feel it's appropriate to close the public hearing, you do have a resolution to act upon tonight.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Gray, for taking my talking points, I usually do that of Aria. So, for the record, Taylor Palmer with Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the applicant, we are joined by Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design and applicant Gary Joseph. I won't repeat Ms. Gray's comments, but just to sort of add a little bit more flavor to that, since we were last before you, on the 15th, we did make a supplemental submission, it did include the details, there were some comments at the last meeting about our reduction, because we did it at the last meeting, and now we've formally submitted our four-lot reduction from the five-lot subdivision. That did combine two of the lots, so it resulted in four total lots that ranged in size from .24 acres to .31 acres, so makes them generally larger than the consistently, the lots in the surrounding, the smallest lots in the surrounding area. We did present that at our February meeting. So, with that, we have, we analyzed in our supplemental submission how the project also further reduces any potential significant, potential environmental impacts. The planning board attorney mentioned that the application had already had a negative declaration under seeker, so with that, unless the board sees fit, or, we can certainly review, but no changes have been made to the site plan from our, from our last meeting.
Great, thank you. Well, just here from our planner, I know, John, you're pretty much complete with your review, no significant comments to date.
Yeah, there was only one, a couple of the tables didn't match because they switched the.
From five to four.
Yeah, lot one, so they just have to be consistent, but otherwise, all my comments have been addressed.
Great, thanks. Mr. Russo, I know you have some.
Yeah, just adding the endorsement to the subdivision plat for the city code, common driveway maintenance declaration and agreement needs to be submitted for review. Performance bond needs to be prepared for the project, so we're asking the applicant's engineer to prepare a construction cost estimate for the project.
And then easement.
And then, right, documents, descriptions, propose the easements.
Okay.
And we did have a chance, I should have mentioned for the record, we did have a chance to review the draft approval resolution, we didn't have any comments regarding same.
Thank you, great. Any questions around the board to the applicant or of our consultants? Great, so then, at this point, we'll go to the public. Anyone here would like to share their thoughts? Thank you.
Hi, everyone, I know you have another crazy long light, so I'll try to be brief. The, I, sorry, Jody McCready, 11 Highland. I had a chance to review the Traffic and Safety Committee letter that they had submitted, I'm kind of confused by it. My house and my neighbor's house are directly opposite these driveways. I park directly opposite that driveway every single day. My house has a walkway that curves toward Grove, and my husband and I park on either side of that walkway, so when I park on the Grove side of the walkway, I am directly opposite their driveway. I don't know if any of you live on streets without sidewalks, but because we live on a street without a sidewalk, that walkway is the only access to my home. So, if I park anyplace else and I don't have access to that walkway, if it snows, if the ground is muddy, I have to walk over that snow, there's no other way to get to my home. I park in front of that walkway to get to my house, and that's right opposite the driveway, that's what I do every single day. So, I'm very confused on how the Traffic and Safety Committee is saying that there's no parking there, when that's the only place that I ever park, and that there would have to continue to be no parking there in order to make it safe. So, as far as I'm concerned, they basically said that it's not safe, and that it doesn't have the access that it needs, because that criteria has not been met, and it will not be met without removing the spot that I've parked in, in front of my own house for the past 20 years. So, that's part of it. I know that I had already sent you a letter about the flaglots issue. I'll be honest, when this first came up, it kind of triggered my anxiety, I was very upset about it, I thought, maybe I'm overreacting, it's right across the street from me, it's a gorgeous property, I've loved it for a very long time. My business is wide-format printing, so I work with developers and architects and real estate attorneys all day long. I've spoken to many of my customers about this project, and all of them have just said, I can't imagine that they would allow flaglots in an urban area on a street that narrow. And that was what kind of triggered my research into flaglots, and everything that I've seen has basically said that they really shouldn't be allowed in an area this size. There is nothing in our code about flaglots, I know other municipalities have it, ours, I haven't found anything about it. You brought up something at the last public hearing, which was like six years ago, but it was like, I don't know, 40 minutes ago, but you mentioned the fact that the planning board is beholden to unintended consequences that don't necessarily fall under the purview of the law, I don't want to misquote you, but it was something along those lines, and I appreciated that comment, because that's, that's kind of what's happening here. The city didn't have the foresight to pass any laws against flaglots. The city didn't have the foresight to pass any laws against flaglots, but everything that I have looked up have said that it just, it would be really detrimental, and sits particularly detrimental when there are easements to the flaglots. And in the, not only are there easements, one of these flaglots has easements over two separate properties to get to it. And again, I can't even imagine how any car would get in and out of that driveway to, there's no room to turn around. So, to back out of that driveway around the curve, if there's snow and, like, I just don't understand how it's going to work and how it's going to be safe. It doesn't, it's just not making sense to me. So, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I know you have a really long meeting. Thank you so much for your time and attention to this.
Thank you. This concept, sorry, one sec. This concept of flaglots has come up in the past, and we've addressed the fact that this particular site does not contain any...
It's not considered a flaglot.
Lots described as flaglots.
It has frontage on streets. It meets the definitions of frontage on a street for our code. The city actually does allow flaglots and has in the past. There's nothing against it in the code, other than it has to meet the lot width at the flag portion of the lot, or the, yeah, the flag portion, the big portion of the, of the flaglot, yes. If you look just south, a block or two of Grove Street, there's a couple of flaglots in your neighborhood that have been permitted, apparently, in the past. So, there are communities that don't like flaglots, because they queue up multiple driveways. That's the main complaint against them. When you have five or six of them in a row, you can see where that can get, be a problem. Here, the code allows common driveways. It's a way of minimizing number of driveways, so they're using that provision of the code. So, that's what I...
I appreciate that. Again, we have addressed this, and I asked you this a couple of meetings ago. I appreciate you sharing that level of clarity for us. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Paul Lyons, 7 Highland Place. I mean, I don't want to repeat what Jody just said. I live right next to Jody, and I'm looking at the map of the driveways. My concern is the driveway that's connected to lot two and three is already existing there with, you know, you'll have to add something to it. But the driveway right next to it, I don't know how many feet are in between those two driveways, but that driveway appears to be going to come out right in front of my house, which eliminates anybody parking in front of my house. My question is, can that driveway be moved away from my house? It's not that far. I mean, you're eliminating a minimum of three parking spots to begin with, with these other, the additional two driveways. I've lived there for over 35 years. I hate to think that I couldn't park in front of my own house because of this driveway. I don't know if that's possible, but I would love that to happen. The other thing is, what is the construction going to do to our house? Houses, as far as, you know, banging that rock? Is there any way that somebody can be put in escrow in lieu of something happened to our, happening to our house? Houses? I don't know if that's a possibility either. That's questions that I, you're the experts. You, I'm asking you those questions, basically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Galberta Comissar, 43 Grove Street. I didn't make it to the last meeting you guys had, and I just wanted to say thank you to Gary. He listened, which is what we were here asking him to do. When he got rid of that, the two houses together, side by side, I think it made a huge difference. We still have to work out a lot of little things, as far as I'm concerned, driveways, walkways, but he did listen, and that's what we asked him to do. So, I'd like to say thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Teresa Kraft. I'm still opposed to this large subdivision and the loss of quality of life for the surrounding neighbors and the quiet neighborhood, and fear this will set a precedent that will run rampant throughout the city of Beacon. Four lots is still too much for this particular property. These proposed lots are completely out of character with the existing neighborhood. I don't live too far from it, so I'll be impacted. Again, this needs to go back to our city codes, one in particular states, 195-20 Minimum Requirements General Standards A. The planning board in consideration, considering an application for the subdivision of land shall be guided by the following considerations and standards. Which standard shall be deemed to be the minimum requirements for convenience, health, safety, and welfare of the city? One, character of land, its bedrock. Two, preservation of natural features, extensive loss of flora and fauna. Three, conformity to city development plan and official map, private road. I saw the fire chief report firsthand, but I do not believe there is ample space on that parcel to accommodate fire and rescue services. As a daughter of a lifetime fireman, I've seen plenty. Four, frontage on approved streets, extensive curb cuts and loss of street parking for the existing neighborhood homeowners should be considered. None of these requirements have been met by this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If I may, we've responded to many of these comments that we've heard this evening. We appreciate the public's input. We have reduced the subdivision down to four lots, down from five. The flaglot discussion was one that we looked at extensively. The driveways are generally located, in particular, where the existing driveway is on the site. But we've been trying to be responsive to the public concerns throughout the process and have provided a zoning compliant and reduced subdivision in the site. Looks like Mr. Bodendorf is going to steal the stage.
Yeah. Mike Bodendorf, engineer for the applicant, for the record. Just to address some of the comments I heard from the public tonight, we're not prohibiting any parking across the street, and we're not going to create a situation that's going to eliminate any parking. We've demonstrated that the worst-turning vehicle can turn into that driveway, being the fire ladder truck. So, that means the ambulances can get in there, the cars can get in and out, the cars can still be parked on the opposite side of that street. And I'm only speculating what I think might have happened with the traffic safety committee's letter, is I think they might have said that they didn't have to prohibit parking across from one of the driveways, because there was a driveway across the street. I don't know if it's there anymore, but if you look on Google Street View, it shows a driveway, I think on Mr. Lyons', or maybe in between the two lots, but it might not be there anymore. That might have been the reason why that comment came up. I don't know. But we're not creating a situation that's going to eliminate any parking on that side of the street.
Thank you. And then, I'll just note, Inspector Flower, you did share your observations just relative to emergency vehicles and Chief Enforhe's observations regarding emergency vehicle And so, to note, a concern was brought to Chief Enforhe regarding emergency vehicle access to the homes. After reviewing the plans and consulting the fire chief, the current plan meets the requirements of the 2020 Fire Code of New York State, Section 511, for emergency vehicle access. The existing home and the proposed new homes do not have front doors which are more than 300 feet from the public street. The existing fire hydrants on Highland Place also meet the distance requirements for the 2020 Fire Code of New York State, Section 507.5, fire hydrant systems. The existing and proposed new homes are all within the 600-foot distance requirement from a fire hydrant. Prior to applying for building permits for the new and existing home, the applicant must request 9/11 address from Dutchess County Department of Emergency Response. I'm sure you know that. So, thank you, Bruce. Any other thoughts or questions around the board as we contemplate a motion to close the public hearing? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Karen?
Can I ask one question?
I'll, hang on. If you just come to the mic, I'll allow it. One question, but again, this is not intended to be an exchange between...
That's fine. It's, I mean, from what we're understanding is that Parking Commission said that we could not park directly across from the driveways. Is that true or false?
I understand it to be an incorrect interpretation of the reading of that, whatever the commission said, excuse me, committee, but no, that is not the case.
All right, thank you.
Wait, I'm so sorry. But it, what it says in the letter... What it says in the letter is that the turning radius is okay, because there is currently no parking permitted opposite the driveway. And at the end of the memo, it says that if anything changes, that there would have to be continued no parking there. That's, those were the exact words in the memo from the Traffic and Safety Committee, so...
Forgive me, I don't have it in front of me. It's not a part of this package, but I...
I know, it was a part of last month's. I don't know why it wasn't included in this month's, but those were the exact words.
I think what, the applicant has demonstrated that you can have parking on the east side of the street and still get a fire truck in there.
That's my understanding.
And I think what the, what the traffic, my interpretation was, is that nobody parks across from the driveway to lots two and three.
But I do.
Because your driveway is across from lots two and three.
But it's not.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Could you let him?
You're allowed to park in front of the driveway, but other people probably wouldn't.
But that's where I park every day. And it specifically says that if I park there, then it's not safe, and that it would require no parking there in order to make it safe.
Yes, please, thank you.
So, the applicant demonstrated through turn radius diagrams that they can get an emergency vehicle, emergency vehicle to get into the site.
Correct.
But the memo that's also in your packet for tonight, from the building inspector Flower, also describes that, under the fire code, a fire truck doesn't have to get in. A fire truck could, right, and Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, but a fire truck can pull up on Highland Avenue.
They're able to, they're able to serve an event, right.
What about an ambulance?
Within a sufficient distance under the fire code, that you wouldn't have to get a fire truck into the site.
Yeah, that's correct. They just have to pull up front, in front of the house. There's enough, they're not far enough away where it's going to cause them to have to put in a driveway to support a fire apparatus to pull into.
Understood.
What about an ambulance?
So, same. If fire apparatus is larger than an ambulance, so I'm going to assume that you're okay.
They would have a better turning radius. They would be able to maneuver easier.
I'm looking at the memo from, dated February 8th, 2023, and it, I think it's worth noting that there is this weird language in there that says, "There is currently no parking permitted opposite this driveway, and therefore, the committee is satisfied that fire department vehicles will have adequate turn radius and ability to access all homes in the proposal." Do we need to revise? Get a revise on the memo?
It sounds, it sounds to me like that was stated, that was stated.
If I may, we also, the attorney just pointed out that the applicant has firematic access, notwithstanding, while the turning radiuses are there, it also isn't necessary. It's just a, whether it's a belter or a suspender...
It renders, to some degree, what the committee stated as moot. It's my understanding.
As long as we can, is that something we need to just record? Because it also, it goes on to say that...
You're doing that right now.
Okay, good.
In a minute.
All right. So, we, so we're going to reject this memo of the planning board as being incorrect.
If we want to go so far as to report back to the committee that, that, that particular part of their observation is stated incorrectly, then let's do so.
It's like in three places, and it is their closing sentence. The committee did wish to highlight the need for continued no parking immediately across from the middle driveway in the proposal. So, you're not, yeah, you're not hallucinating it's in here.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because that was, thank you.
Yep. So, we need to just, so, so through the minutes of this meeting, Amanda will capture them, we are, you know, rejecting the conclusions of the February 8th, 2023 Traffic Safety Committee memo as being incorrect.
Thank you, yes. Okay. Anyway, we had a motion on the table to close the public hearing, and I believe Karen made the motion. I'll accept a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Len. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then, again, we have in front of us the draft resolution to adopt. So, I will accept either a conversation around it or otherwise a motion to adopt.
I'd just like to say, I appreciate the applicant being sensitive to community concerns and reducing the size of the development.
And, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Karen. Second by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Do we have an aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to the next item on our agenda. This is a public hearing on application for site plan, excuse me, approval and subdivision approval, mixed-use commercial and residential. You're still here? 393 Fishkill Avenue, 397 Fishkill Avenue.
I think Amanda sets these up.
I'm going to refer to this generally as Route 52.
I think it's called the postage stamp.
Yeah. So, again, we'll, we'll get a brief history of where we're at from Jennifer before we go to the applicant.
So, on this one, you have previously referred this to the ARB Subcommittee, and the Subcommittee has issued its report back to you. You, at the last meeting, did direct preparation of a secret negative declaration, which you do have before you this evening, and can act upon that. Your next step would be to open the public hearing on the application itself. And if you feel that the comments have been addressed to your satisfaction, you can close the public hearing, and the next step would be to direct a resolution on this matter.
Thank you. I like this new thing we're doing. So, first item of business, then, we do have this draft, eh, draft negative declaration in front of us. Any discussion, thoughts before putting a motion to adopt on the table?
It looks reasonable to me.
Does that mean it's a motion?
Well, I was allowing for other comments.
Did I send edits on this one? Like, did I send little editorial things on this one?
Yes, Len did send a couple of little typos that were fixed.
Thanks.
If I may, for the record, we did review the negative, draft negative declaration. We didn't have any...
The one without the typos?
No. My associate did point those out, but we did not relay those back to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ally.
So, was that a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Karen. Second.
Second.
Second by, what was that, Kevin?
Kevin?
Kermit the Frog. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, gosh, I've never had so much fun in my life. Okay, so, then...
Ready to get out more?
Is he being green?
I don't know if, I still, I hope I get through the rest of this meeting without having a recurrence of my response to your last...
I said usually it's Taylor, I don't know if I'm...
Have a comment. I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Len. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, fuck, forgive me. So, good evening.
Good evening.
Once again.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Taylor Palmer. I'm with the law firm of Cuddy &amp; Fader. On behalf of the applicant, tonight, I am joined by the project architect, R.A. Siegel, Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design, as well as our traffic consultant, Rich D. Andrea of Colliers Design Engineering. Andrea of Colliers Design Engineering. We're also joined by the applicant, Jordan Haug. As the chairman stated, and as the planning board attorney referenced, we are here this evening to open, as you just did, the site plan and subdivision public hearings in connection with the applicant's proposal to develop, redevelop the premises for a three-story mixed-use commercial multifamily residential property located at 397, 393 Fishkill Avenue and 7 Conklin, so the three different lots. As this is the first public hearing, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I know it's been a long night, but I will try and go through a summary of the presentation for the benefit of the public that may not have attended before this meeting. And for the record, the premises generally located at the intersection of Fishkill Avenue, New York State Route 52, and Conklin Street, which are comprised of three separate lots that are improved as follows. 393 Fishkill Avenue is presently improved by a one-story commercial building that's currently occupied by the Four Seasons Sunroom. That's that beautiful glass structure that's there. 397 Fishkill Avenue is improved by a one-story mixed-use building that's occupied by the applicant's present professional offices, as well as a hair salon. And then finally, 7 Conklin is improved by an existing two-family residential building. So the applicant is proposing to demolish all those structures, including the beautiful Four Seasons Sunroom, which will be available. The applicant is proposing to get rid of those structures, and then, for the background for the public, this is in the general business district. The surrounding uses in the area include commercial, multifamily, single-family residential developments, car dealerships, auto repair shops, gas stations, and other retail manufacturing uses. The applicant is proposing to construct a zoning-compliant mixed-use building and associated off-street parking on site. The new building program consists of a three-story mixed-use development, and that is comprised of 12 apartments and 3,500 square feet of commercial space, both of which are permitted in the GB District. The proposed building will include six apartments on both the second and third floors, and then commercial space for a mix of office uses and retail. One of the 12 units will be a below-market-rate unit, as is required in the city's below-market-rate for housing local law. The expanding parking area will be located behind the new building, and it will be accessed off of Conklin, and it will include 34 new parking spaces, well, 34 total parking spaces. Procedurally, the application before you is for site plan and subdivision approvals. It's really a lot merger. It's not proposing any new lots. It's one resultant lot. As is more fully detailed in our submission, it is considered an sudden action. The board just took its seeker action and declared a negative declaration. So while we are pleased to be back before you, I'll have R.A. very briefly touch on the visuals again for the public, and then certainly look forward to any comments from the public.
Thank you.
33 parking spaces.
Yeah.
33, thanks.
Taylor math. We submitted our revised drawings to address the comments we received at the last meeting. We also submitted the updated renderings based on the comments that we got at the meeting after the ARB shared their comments with you. So we addressed those items. Then John Russo had a question about the fence and the ability to plant trees that fenced at the property line. That, I just wanted to clarify, that stops at the, where the wall starts. So there's no conflict between the fence and the wall?
No, you're actually showing trees being planted right at the fence.
All right, I'll clarify, but, but the idea is that there shouldn't be a fence back where the retaining wall is?
No, you move the trees back off the retaining wall.
Right.
Right to a fence line that you're proposing.
I think the fence ends here.
Yeah.
I think one of the plans actually showed a fence extending beyond, but.
I thought the fence ended there.
Yeah, I don't know if there was another drawing that had it somewhere else, but the idea is that the fence stops where the wall starts.
So, given that there's some confusion, is there a way you can maybe better clarify?
Yeah, I'll just have another note on there.
Big, big note, big bold note.
Yep.
It's hard to see where the fence ends.
Yeah. Okay, now I'll clarify it on the drawing, just to make sure. But, and then otherwise, we had some updated landscaping, and, but that was really it in terms of changes on what we're showing now.
Great.
Yeah, and I'll just show you the new rendering.
Okay. This is.
Yeah, so that's looking.
Going north along.
Right.
52.
Yep. That's that corner that we talked about.
Can I just ask a question about this?
Yeah, you may be wanting to ask the same question.
Okay, so at the corner, actual corner, there's the gray band at the top of the column and at the top of the recessed bits, brick bits. What's the plane relationship between the top of the actual corner of the building and the adjacent planes? Like, is the corner set back? Like, I'm a.
The plaster is kind of proud, right?
Yeah, yeah, that, that corner column is out a little bit.
The column itself or just the trim?
The column itself.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you. It's a little bit hard.
Oh, okay. And then we also, there's a.
As Len pointed out, I was like, good question, Len, maybe I'll ask it. You did. Okay. And so as far as other input by the ARB, you're obviously reflecting all of that input here, correct?
Yeah, and, and we had, there's a couple of comments that came up at the last meeting, during the meeting, and it was basically about how that column is capped, and, you know, so I made the change that we had discussed at the meeting.
Okay, and just as far as the ARB members remaining, because we lost Jill.
How do you feel about that being proud, that, that plaster?
The corner brick element on the end? It's not really a column, you know? I mean, the fundamental problem is you're making it a veneer on a balloon structure, right? Sorry. The basic problem is that you're making, you're putting a brick veneer on a balloon structure, and it's really difficult to follow conventional masonry detailing and composition, right? When you do that, like, it's easy to sort of, just sort of turn the plan into an elevation and then veneer it, you know? So if, this isn't on Main Street, so I don't think you necessarily have to limit yourself to traditional detailing, right? I think there's an opportunity for expression and having a more expressive building in areas that aren't the CMS. However, there's kind of odd, I think people get an odd feeling when things that aren't built in the way that traditional brick is built, right? Like, you would never see a traditional building with a corner pier like that. It's very unconventional. You might see factory buildings, but it'd be reflected in part of their, the reason why they were built. It would reflect the fact that it was open bays or large windows and that sort of thing. And they wouldn't generally have a corner element unless it was like offices were on the corner and the, whatever. You know, there's sort of conventions that you don't even notice about the fabric of the way I built in Beacon and in many other places. I'm sorry, I may be going on too much, but that's why it's awkward to make that corner the way it is, because it's not, it looks like it's a column. And you wouldn't have a three-story-high column holding up a cornice, right? The way that I would resolve it is I would, I would back off and make it a more, a less conventional-looking thing, right? I would try to make it, I'd try to be, de-emphasize the corner in some way, because it's naturally going to be awkward, because it's three stories tall. I'm just giving you.
So I think that's his long way of saying it doesn't make, it doesn't, it looks weird. Doesn't make sense.
Could you do something different with the cornice above that column? To maybe draw more attention to it? Like you said, when you're going to do something different, instead of.
Let's not design it for them.
But I'm just saying, like.
Let's just observe what you observed, that it apparently looks a little, I mean, I tend to agree, it looks a little awkward. The question is, why is it there? Why is it proud? Doesn't really look like it has any kind of.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's often, when you have a corner situation like that, there's often something that kind of marks out that corner. You know, so I, I mean, I know what you're saying, but I think there's also, you know, precedent that sort of hasn't made sense.
So what you're saying to us is that you prefer to keep it that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Huh. I, you know, think about it. I mean, it doesn't take much to do it, and.
Now what you're, now what you're hearing from the board, or at least the members, please consider.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll.
Reviewing that again.
We'll talk about it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything else?
Otherwise, I think it looks great.
Okay, great. Agreed. Any other, any other observations you want to highlight for us, John?
The only other point that I have is the, there's no lighting on the southwest terraces. So I think you really need to have some lighting out there, especially around the steps, so that people don't trip in the dark.
Agreed.
And maybe there needs to be another.
Applicant in agreement.
And maybe there needs to be something else over the secondary access door. There's one over the main entrance, but the, the other stairwell doesn't have anything over the door, and it just looks a little, you almost never see a, an entrance door without some little projection over it, so.
Okay, great. Acknowledged.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
R.A., I already brought to light what I had with regards to concerns with the plantings near the fence and the retaining wall.
Right, that's pretty much.
The rest of the comments, they've.
You've got landscape lighting and then the trees. Yeah, good, okay. Noted. Okay, so we'll go to the public. Anyone here who would like to share their thoughts on this? Your name and address, please.
Drew DeCastro, 721 Conklin Street. My property butts up against the project. I basically get, the owner developer wants to get the biggest bang for his buck. Makes perfect business sense. And I'm hoping that you all can come to some sort of compromise. I realize things change, and I don't have a problem with that necessarily, but if there is one building on all of Fishkill Avenue that is three stories, and that is hedgewood, and it's hidden by woods. If you're going from Main Street towards Fishkill, when you hit Delavan Avenue and Mavis Tire, after that, it's all woods. So even though we are part of the city of Beacon, we are more country than Beacon, and something this size just doesn't fit in the neighborhood. Aesthetically speaking, it doesn't belong there. Personally, I would like just two stories, the commercial on the bottom, and six apartments on top. If we can come to some sort of compromise, I would be very happy. As far as the landscaping goes, they're looking to put some oak trees. Oak trees are deciduous. That means they're going to lose their leaves in the fall. Those leaves are going to end up, a good portion of them, in my yard. I personally would not prefer deciduous trees. I would be very happy with something along the arborvitae. They have several of those. And I would be willing to allow them onto my property to put a row of zigzag arborvitae along the fence on my property, so that there is the six-foot fence, and then eventually a green barrier for the light and the noise as a buffer. We've learned, when Healy developed his backlot, we asked for a fence and evergreens. We got a post-and-beam fence and white pine, which are see-through. We have no protection. So I'm asking that this time specifically, we get dense evergreens, such as arborvitae, and at least a six-foot, if not an eight-foot fence along the property line.
Thank you.
And my other concern would be, 12 apartments means probably 12 cars. Mead Avenue is a one-way street. All of those houses must exit from Conklin Street, along with 12 more vehicles from this one spot, along with Conklin Street and part of DeSoto Avenue. Are we going to end up with a traffic light there? Or are we just going to sit there for 20, 30 minutes trying to get out onto Fishkill Avenue? Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Even though, I understand arborvitae is considered deer candy. Is there, and then, you know, they start to look stupid when they get to a certain height and the deer only can reach. I just hate looking at that, but anyway. Is there any consideration by the applicant for a little more dense evergreen, not arborvitae?
A, we have a great landscape designer who would be pleased to incorporate modifications to benefit, add additional screening or other betterment to the neighbors. We certainly appreciate that. We can incorporate that in. I think that would be very much appropriate. We've tried to work that in, but we can get rid of the deer lollipops or supplement some type of less flavorful green.
Not sure if the rest of the board agrees, especially our landscape expert here. Sounds like.
Blue spruce, I hear they like too.
I would go through the trouble of putting netting up in the winter to deter the deer, because I think the benefit of the dense. There aren't a lot of options on the dense evergreen screening that grow, you know, quickly and, and remain dense.
Japanese holly. I got a nasty look. Okay, I'm not going to plant that in my yard.
Just don't say bamboo.
Great.
We can incorporate that, for sure.
Anyway. Sure, quick one. I, we generally don't allow double-dipping, but.
I appreciate it, thank you. If they want to put the arborvitae on my property, so that they don't have to look at the deer, what the deer ate, I don't mind looking at it.
Yeah, okay.
Again, I don't think we'd object to that, but then it would become the joint properties problem.
Maintenance item for this gentleman.
Certainly, as the board sees fit with that level, but.
Look, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily advocate that one do that. It's a nice offer, but again, for the maintenance aspect of it, we're going to look to the applicant.
Understood.
So, and again, if it is arborvitae, anything you can do to keep the deer away.
Okay.
Maybe the applicant would consider making a donation to his neighbor of some plants that he could plant on his yard.
Unprecedented. We'll leave it there for consideration.
Thank you.
Just, I would like to say, in terms of the building height, when the zoning code was revised in 2020, they specifically added residential to the GB District in the hopes that, instead of having one-story strip commercial-type development out there, you would have multi-story residential over commercial. That would be more like the city and less like, you know, the town of Fishkill or someplace else. So this actually is the city's intent to create buildings that are more three-dimensional rather than car dealerships. Or one-story buildings with a lot of cars and not many buildings.
What do you got against car dealerships?
I won't say anything further.
So anyone else from the public?
Teresa Kraft, I agree with the height of that building. I'm afraid of the light pollution that I'm also going to see across the creek. Believe it or not, Healy's is pretty bright. And I really don't have much to say, as I like to pick my battles, but I want to state on the record that I only wish that it did not look like the generic boxes we're seeing on Main Street and all throughout Beacon.
Thank you. Anyone else? We could, we could discuss a motion to close the public hearing. Any thoughts, board?
I don't really see what else there is to really address here. I mean, it's basically, it has a right application, but I, I've heard the concerns about building height, but you're allowed to be multifamily residential, isn't that right? So I'm not sure what purpose it's going to serve to keep the public hearing open at this point.
That sounds to me like a motion.
Mike needs to.
You're getting, you're getting the, getting him mad. So, is that a motion?
That was just a point of discussion. I mean, I guess people are in agreement.
I tend to agree.
Okay, motion.
Motion by.
I'll second it.
Yes, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would simply like to encourage the applicant to be responsive to his neighbor's concerns.
Yeah. Great, and then we can, we can discuss authorizing Jennifer's office to draft a resolution to adopt. Thoughts on the matter, or otherwise a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question, R.A., before he goes? You said in the ARB Subcommittee that you were looking for a flush siding rather than a clavard siding?
Yeah.
Did you find one? Is it going to be flush or clavard?
They make a flush version.
Okay, so it is going to be flush.
They make a flush version.
It'll be wood, simulated wood, but flush, not with a clavard.
Right. Okay. Great, we'll go to the next item on the agenda. That being, our continued review of an application for concept plan, approval Beacon Hip Lofts and Studios, Front Street, submitted by Beacon Hip Lofts LLC, and referred to the planning board by City Council.
Sorry, I'll get used to this. Okay, so for this application, this is before the planning board, as a concept plan application that was referred from the City Council to the planning board for your advisory report and recommendation on the concept plan. You are also serving as lead agency for secret purposes, so your task on this application is to do the secret review, and then issue an advisory report back to the City Council on the concept plan. Once it's back at the City Council, there will be a public hearing on the concept plan. If and when the City Council approves the concept plan, then the application comes back to you for site plan review, at which time you'll have a public hearing on the site plan review.
Thank you. Good evening, once again.
Good evening. R.A. Siegel, representing the owner. So again, we submitted revised drawings based on the comments we got at the last meeting. And John, I just wanted to clarify, so we're showing the existing trees on the site now? And they're all basically around the creek, so we're not proposing to remove any trees.
Just put a note there, note of tree removal, because we just want to make sure. I think there was one tree to me that looked like it was going to be removed, but I just, it's up here somewhere, as I remember.
I'll double check, but.
Yeah, it's pretty treeless.
Yep. And then also, I wanted to clarify the chain link fence at Front Street that you mentioned. Is that the existing fence?
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm not sure whose that is. That may be the.
Yeah, it's on your property.
Just get rid of it anyway.
All right, we'll look into that. That whole thing along that shared property line.
Yeah. There's no, it's in the HDLO district, no chain link fence are allowed, so, and it's pretty well fallen down anyway.
Okay.
Sold out by vines and weeds.
Okay, no, we'll take care of that.
And then, just real quick, we talked at length last month about the reduction in parking spaces and the survey of the existing tenants requesting 14 additional land bank spaces. So that's better, right?
Yeah, that's reflected here. So that's really the main change to the site plan. So we, I mean, first, we revised the number of parking spaces from 95 down to 80, you know, with the shared parking. And then, based on the analysis of, you know, the potential for other people using that facility from the developed parcel, we're proposing to have 14 land bank spaces.
Yeah.
And both of those are shown on the plan. We responded to John Clark's comment to put, you know, trees on the non-land bank spaces. So if they ever had to go back, it wouldn't be an issue. But so basically, we'd be constructing 66 spaces and have 14 in reserve.
Great. And Mr. Russo, you have a five-page, five pages of notes here. Anything you want to highlight? I'm sure obviously the applicant has reviewed and.
Yes, and some of them are just ongoing notes, which the applicant notes they'll address as the project moves forward. We still have some concerns with access. They are showing a secondary emergency access. That work has to occur on the neighboring parcels site. We don't know if discussions have occurred with that neighbor yet.
They're set up for next week, so.
With the neighbor himself?
Yeah. Between the owner and the neighbor.
And the building department also? Has that been set up?
For the fire access or?
Yeah, that was one of the.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure where that is.
No, I'm working on, I'm working on trying to set a date with Gary to meet out there with Mike. I just got the email this afternoon, so hopefully by the end of the week. If we don't meet this week, we're definitely going to meet early next week. We'll have that squared away soon enough.
Okay, so and that lines up with the neighbor meeting, so we should be able to report back to you on that.
There's some more work required with regards to the water and sewer report that was submitted, specifically looking at the and evaluating the condition of the existing forest main, fire flows and pressures in the area, and odor issues that have been brought forth by the city based upon that pump station there. And then there's just a number of cleanup comments on the plans themselves.
Great.
Okay, so we're wondering, you know, we're just trying to separate out the SECRE items so we can go back to the City Council and then we're going to be coming back here for more detailed site plan review. But I'm just, you know, are there specifically more SECRE items in your list?
Well, yes, fire flows and pressures would be. As far as the secondary access, you know, I think you need to confirm that you can do that, otherwise that is an impact.
Okay.
That answered your question.
Yeah, we're just trying to.
Yep. Totally understood. I myself want to make sure we track SECRE because for us, that's our next action. So just get it all together.
All right.
Okay. Any other questions the applicant or?
Should be noted that they have eliminated the steps on the Greenway Trail, which is a big advantage now.
That's fantastic. Yeah, we discussed that last meeting and you felt confident that you'd be able to do that, so that's great.
Yeah, that worked, yeah.
Memorialize that. Okay. Anything else, board?
So the process on this, is this going to City Council after this?
No, SECRE. We're going to act on SECRE.
Okay.
Once they're done, and then we'll, it may end up being in the same conference or in the same meeting, we'll compile our notes on our thoughts and share them back to the City Council.
And there's a procedural question about the flood permit that was mentioned, the engineers, do you know if there are any, would that potentially require any changes to the configuration or layout or location of utilities or of uses on the site?
No.
Okay.
Great. Anything else we can do for you?
No, we'll be back.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Can't wait. And it's only a couple of weeks away.
Yeah.
If it's tomorrow, please shoot me now. Okay, we're going to move to the next agenda item. That being, what the heck are we? We had 536 Main, yes. Continued review of application for site plan approval, three-story retail commercial 536 Main Street submitted by HRSM LLC. That's your cue, Jennifer.
Okay, so for this application, it has been on the agenda, I think, twice, once or twice now. There are still some materials that need to be submitted before you're able to open a public hearing.
Yep.
The applicant is, it's a site plan approval for the three-story building. The applicant is requesting a parking waiver. In the event that the board finds that they are not inclined to grant that parking waiver, then the applicant would need to seek a variance from the zoning board. So I think it's important to try to come to a consensus on that issue sooner rather than later. Otherwise, you're serving as lead agency for SECRE, and we're in an information gathering stage right now.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good to see you. First time here tonight.
Name and address?
Taylor Palmer, Liberty Street. With Cuddy and Fader on behalf of the applicant. The owner of the property is, as the attorney mentioned, is HRSM LLC, the owner. I am joined by the architect, R.A. Siegel, Mike Bodendorf of Hudson Land Design, as well as our traffic consultant, Carlito Holt of DTS Providence. As the chairman and the planning board attorney mentioned, we are before you in connection with our continued site plan review for this application for a three-story commercial development at 536 Main Street. The proposed building will host a retail showroom for Warp &amp; Weft, a custom designer and rug curation business. At the board's February meeting, which was our first meeting before this board, the board announced its intent, as the planning board attorney mentioned, to serve as lead agency, which was circulated on the 20th, so now the board is serving for the unlisted action before you. Since our last appearance, we did appear at the Architectural Review Board Subcommittee. The visuals that R.A. will put up on the screen for his brief presentation are now reflective of changes responsive to that discussion. That has not yet been formally submitted to you all, but will be included in our submission by this Friday. See if Amanda was listening. So with that, in a moment, R.A. will address those comments from the committee. But as we included in our letter to your board dated February 28th, we have reconfigured the building program so that we have a 20-foot rear yard setback. That wasn't accounted for our initial, so that results in about 14,304 total gross square feet for the building. We also submitted an exhibit that provided the dimensions of the surrounding on-street parking areas that were, I previously identified in our traffic study, and again, I don't want to take too many of Carlito's points, but the total amount of parking that we had identified was conservative. It had actually, it increased the available parking in the area from 375 total spaces to 424 parking spaces within 800 feet of the project. This results in 99 parking spaces available during peak demand, which is 1:30 to 2:00 PM, which exceeds the project's anticipated peak demands by nearly 90 spaces. As previously discussed, the application has been designed to be fully dimensionally zoning compliant with the exception, as the planning board attorney mentioned, for the commercial use, which is the off-street parking. The applicant respectfully submits that that 90 space surplus available in the area during the project's peak demand, as detailed in our updated report, demonstrates compliance with the requisite standards for the boards, considering the board's precedent for parking waivers specifically to commercial uses. Again, there are no, there is no residential component to this three-story application. We would also highlight, of course, and I believe he's hopefully still on the Zoom, the city's traffic consultant concurred with our consultant's recommendation or conclusion about the available parking in the area and that there's available parking within the 800-foot radius study to meet the variance, albeit it's not a variance that we're seeing, but the waiver being requested by the applicant. So with that, R.A., if you can just walk the board through the changes reflective of the ARB committee, and then we'll have Carlito just touch on the updates to his report.
I also just wanted to mention that the applicant retained a landscape designer, so we'll have the full landscape design and planting schedule on the next submission. So, yeah, so we met with the ARB Subcommittee after the last planning board meeting. The applicant was in on that Zoom meeting along with the subcommittee members, and we made several changes to the proposed design based on the discussion with the committee. We looked at the vertical spacing of the windows on the second and third floor and modified the proportion there. We added windows to both side walls of the building. The window and storefront openings were changed to include a full-depth steel frame that projects a couple inches from the face of the building. And that's how the owner wanted to detail that, to express the support of the masonry openings that we were talking about. We added breaks to the front elevation by creating those projected piers at the sides. And the upper cornice was detailed to include breaks in the continuous front of the cornice. The applicant is still looking at the cornice design, so there may be additional updates to that. But so after meeting with the committee and reviewing what he wanted to do, this is the latest rendering.
But again, you mentioned there's some work still under consideration for the cornice?
Yeah. Yeah, he's just looking at how that's detailed, so that'll show up.
I would support, I would support that.
Yeah.
Great. Any thoughts or questions around the board?
You know, I hadn't noticed this before. John, in plan, I noticed that the corner, the face of this, the plane of this facade is somewhat of a continuation of the in-plane. Is it in-plane with the buildings to the adjacent, to the, just to the left, I guess? And if you extended that line, there's sort of this disconnect, right? That if you, like, connected the dots, right? Did you explore both of those options? Like basically connecting the corner of the building to the left and the right, so that was the plane of your facade? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, what we did was, you know, basically offset it so we get that pedestrian clearway from the curb line. So, you know, we're not built out all the way to the property line because that comes out further than it needs to.
You are at that corner. You pulled back where you had to, right?
Right, yeah.
But, I mean, my question is, if you were pushing that out just to capture as much sidewalk area as possible, it doesn't seem like it'd be that beneficial. And I don't know if you wanted to, if you looked at it in three dimension and that it wouldn't seem like this building was jutting out from the adjacent building, right? From the new building, the more recent building. So, you know what I'm saying, which might feel a little awkward. It's hard to see it in some of the renderings.
You mean the building to the right?
Yes, the building to the right. I should be more specific, but that's just something I hadn't, I hadn't noticed when we were looking at it before. And it might seem more at place, at ease on the site.
Okay, now we can, I'll go over that with the applicant.
And there was some discussion, there were neighbors that, adjacent, that were concerned about that, the passageway between the existing building with their windows looking out. I know it's compliant, it's legal, but right now, there's no view, there's, I didn't see any images, I don't know if you've worked on that, what those people would be now looking at, right? I mean, they've, and whether or not that would be a blank wall, because I know functionally it, you're putting, it's commercial uses, right? You don't have a need for a window. But it seems like it would be, you'd both be a good neighbor and also perhaps making a more interesting-looking thing that would be part of the public space, because you would be seeing down that alleyway, right, from the sidewalk, right? That would be part of the presence of the building because of the offset of the adjacent buildings. You can see part of it there. There we go. So are you adding, are those just the four windows?
Yeah.
And what's happening, the rest, is there a way, is it, is the wall articulated or set forward or backwards beyond that?
Yeah, I mean, there's those vertical piers all the way up and down that divides it up, so it's not, you know, it's not just a plain blank all the way down there.
Just to add for that, for that comment, you know, part of our concern too is just making sure that, you know, not necessarily everybody wants a part, a window-to-window wall either, so we're trying to be respective there.
No, no, I understand. Yeah, I mean, and it is a commercial building and functionally, you don't need to have windows there because of the way it's being used.
Right, and they, and they're not built up to the lot line either, their building. So it's also, that existing, that new building or the addition to the old building that created that apartment building is not up to the lot line.
Right, but also since it's visible from the street, John had brought up during the ARB that there is, there could be an argument that every 30 feet, there should be an articulation of that facade, right? It may not be a literal, but I think it's definitely in the spirit of the, what will be the physical presence of this building on the street as part of filling in, you know, the gaps and contributing to that, the fabric that's so important in this town. And I think you should think about it.
Yeah, we'll review that, too.
It's a great spot for another Rick Price right there. Let's talk about the parking waiver.
I just have one, can I make one comment on the elevation?
Yeah, of course.
Before we do that? Because I have a bunch of parking questions also.
Go for it.
I appreciate the detail that you've put into the windows, and I just have to say, I prefer the corners unarticulated in this building because I feel like if you're going to articulate a change in plane, you should make more of it. But I like, you know, there's a lot of buildings in this neighborhood that just have a flat plane and corner. It just feels a little.
Yeah, it is part of the zoning code where it's required to be broken up in some way.
Can we adjust that?
The only thing I would.
Variance?
What?
Can you provide a waiver?
Is that something?
Waiver. The only thing I would suggest is, see where you have those two corners articulated, is if you, if you ran it across the top and just kind of framed the windows, it might, it might feel a little more natural.
It feels like it's got a very squat hat.
Yeah.
A wide body.
I find the cornice and the window framing kind of startling, almost in like a kind of, like an eight-bit video game art kind of way. And I don't, yeah.
Like Minecraft? Yeah, I hope, I hope you do some work on the corners. I understand the applicant prefers, and look, to some degree, just matching the rest of Main Street, although you've done a very good job with the rest of Main Street, R.A. You know, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a disnification. So, you know, I'm all for this sort of change-up to a little bit more modern with some traditional materials. Just some of the proportions tweak them a little.
I have to agree.
Get them better. Make it better.
Do the windows on the sidewalk continue or do they just stop after the first two?
They stop there. They're in the first bay.
Okay.
Yes, you may move on to parking.
Thank you. Just some general questions. If this were a more, you know, standard first-floor commercial and second-floor residential, would that require more parking, generally speaking? If it's possible to make an assumption like that?
Usually, the commercial parking is more than residential.
Okay.
But it depends on the type of commercial. You know, if it's a retail, or a hotel, or, you know, some...
So this type of commercial in relation to residential?
Well, you know, I have questions. They, you know, they say they're only going to have three to six employees, and, and only open primarily to appointments. And so it isn't going to be a retail establishment withers.
Right. Mine is suggested a brief presentation update based on the city's traffic consultant's responses, because these are part of our presentations.
Why don't we let them tell the story?
Yeah. Sorry to jump ahead, Karen.
Good evening, everyone. Carlito Holt with DTS Providence. So if you recall, when we initially present, prepared our traffic and parking letter, we looked at ITE parking requirements. Unfortunately, for the type of use that's being proposed here, there isn't really a comparable land use, so we tried to be conservative with, with a furniture store land use, which this really isn't. And since that time, we had more discussions with the applicant to really get a better sense of his operations. And what he's determined is, on startup, they would have three employees, and based upon the success of the business, that could grow to a maximum of six employees. And they do not anticipate more than three customers at any one time. The overwhelming majority of customers will be by appointment only. And if they do get walk-ins, it's hot, the high likelihood is that those walk-ins are people that are already frequenting the downtown area anyway, so they would have been going to other establishments, they're walking Main Street. This looks like an interesting store, let's pop in. So, so that doesn't increase the parking demand, per se. So what we, what we took a look at was to say, if it reached that six-employee max with, with the three customers, you're really only looking at a peak parking demand of nine vehicles. Also, when we initially prepared the parking study for the on-street parking, we used a general dimension to estimate the amount of on-street parking. We've since taken a more refined look, and physically dimensioned every block, as well as taking into account where there's breaks for driveways in the on-street parking area. And Mr. Palmer alluded to, now, the parking count that we initially estimated at 375 is actually 424. And based upon our survey, that would leave 99 spaces available during the peak parking period. So we would only be using nine of those spaces, so there's another 90. There was also a comment about other potential development that may have gotten a similar waiver that is not yet open, that could contribute to that, the main one being 416-420 Main Street. And I believe their parking study estimated a peak parking demand of only eight vehicles. So even with the eight combined with our project, there's still a buffer, let's say, of close to 80 spaces that would still be available.
Curious, your use of the term "available spaces." They're only available if nobody takes them first. Parking, I'm being cheeky, parking down here is just tough. Even if you're within, like, I'm just editorializing, even if you are within an 800, I understand. You, there's a possibility for 90-some-odd cars to park within an 800-foot radius. They're usually already always taken. But anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, a good amount of the parking that is available is on the, on the side streets that go up the hill behind the property, in close proximity to this project. And that was something that was identified in the, in the Main Street Committee parking study as well.
You mean at Ver Plank?
I'd have to look at the...
Top of Plank.
Schneck.
No.
What'd you call it? Schneak?
Shank.
Skank?
Skank.
Yeah. That's a hard street to park on, too. But anyway, my, my point is, this whole, I, so, I don't know. The fact that this lot would require 25 spaces is kind of nutty anyway, just because you put 25 parking spaces there, you have no room for a building. So, and it is downtown Maine, it's mostly pedestrian traffic. I don't know, I'm generally in support of a waiver, my long way of saying that. I don't know. Oh, Stark, thank you. Jennifer just reminded us that you're, you're there in waiting with bated breath. Any thoughts you want to share with us?
Yes, I am still here.
You sound so excited to be there.
So, yeah, so I think as Carlito alluded to, our comment letter to this project, there, we looked at the Main Street parking study that John, John Clark shared with us, and the parking availability kind of along the Main Street corridor is limited, so the parking that they're going to want to source from is going to be up on the side streets, like Ver Plank, Davis, and Shank. And we kind of note in our comment letter that those are predominantly residential uses up there, but being that this is a commercial use, similar to an application we're going to hear about later, this, maybe in the morning, that the commercial residential uses aren't going to be parking at the same time, so the availability should be there for this use when it's open, and then back to the residential uses when this use closes. So.
Thank you. Did you have anything else on parking?
Oh, so, my question was about the general, like, intensity of parking needs, because thinking down the road, he, you know, someone else's owns the building, and they want to renovate it and put apartments up on top, does that increase the parking density? And do we have any means to address that potential situat, like, you know, would the number of apartments that they put in have to be limited to the nine-car waiver that we're, you know, considering?
No, it wouldn't have to be. You can reconsider it if they came in with some sort of, you know, the bigger danger, I think, is, is for somebody to come in with a retail use that has a lot of in-and-out traffic. Because that, then it, it provides more parking problems than, you know, the number of units you could get in a building this size, which wouldn't be very many. But, again, public parking in the central business area is available if you're willing to walk, more than a block or two. And that's what the Main Street Access Committee found. Plus, there's the free access bus, where you can park at a remote place and take the bus to that end, and get on the bus and go back, in theory. So, generally speaking, I'm in favor of very minimal parking standards in downtown areas, because you should think of it more as a shared parking and pedestrian environment, rather than, because almost every Main Street lot couldn't handle the required parking that's in the code. Almost everyone.
I 100% agree with the waiver.
There's very rare that you find a, a Main Street lot that has enough room in the back to provide anywhere near the parking. So if you're going to fill in lots, which the comprehensive plan that everybody supports, then you have to be able to waive parking.
Why don't we make it easier on ourselves and just change the code?
I'm going to be in front of the city council on Monday and arguing for a revised parking code.
Second. Sorry.
But Main Street has been revised, and reduced substantially over what the rest of the city is requiring. But it still comes up with an awkward question every time a building wants to go up.
Yeah, no, we've hit this, we've come up against this a lot.
Well, okay, just throwing this in there, the, I mean, we're actually looking at the code, the provisions that normally impose parking requirements and give us some ability to waive them, don't apply in CMS. And if I'm reading this right, this is two, section 223-4118, so CMS-specific regulations. There's three grounds that would be pertinent here, are going to be can waive parking requirements. One being sufficient public parking within 800 feet, another being a professional parking study, and subsequent to the same thing. And the third being, and this appears to be just a broad catchall, the application involves a designated historic property defined in chapter 134 of the city code, which would basically encompass, like, 90% of CMS right there, wouldn't it? I mean, maybe...
It wouldn't apply to this parcel, because it's...
This would not classify as historic.
It's in the historic district, but it's not a historic building.
Okay. So, so we definitely do need to find either sufficient public parking within 800 feet, either on our own or by means of the study.
Yeah, that's, that's why they drew that big circle.
Right.
800 feet.
Yeah. So what I, I advise them to do is, they've already provided the 800-foot study, which says there's adequate parking. I've suggested they beef that up by saying, this is what our use would require. And they've come up with nine spaces. And if they justify that based on other stores in their portfolio, or, that are more consistent with their type of operation, that beefs it up that maybe instead of 25 waiver, you're really only talking about nine spaces that are, are really being waived.
Now, if we grant a waiver on nine spaces, and if business doesn't go as planned, people don't want my furniture, and somebody winds up proposing to convert this into residential apartments over commercial space, does that get us into the zone where the 25% increase in, or is that only on pre-64 construction?
Well, I would suggest that you waive it on the 25.
Yeah, if there's a change in use in the future that affects, that, and the change of use is measured based on change in parking requirements, and that's under the parking chapter of the code, then it requires site plan approval. So it's going to have to come back to you.
And a reconsideration of the waiver, or whatever. But I would, I, what I've suggested is that they ask for a waiver at the 25, which is required by the code, but justify it by saying, we're really only going to need nine, and there's plenty of room for nine spaces on the adjacent streets.
Within that 800-foot radius.
This isn't a factor that I'm pulling out of the regulations, but it's kind of hard to not observe, and walk by this property, where you're supposed to put parking there. The only place to put it would be to displace the, the commercial spaces, which would be on the ground floor in the first place.
Exactly.
As a practical matter, so...
Sounds like you're in support of the waiver.
I don't think there's a practical choice.
Yeah.
The, the Main Street Access Committee has also suggested ways to add on-street parking in that neighborhood. On Ver Plank, there's no spaces. You get striped spaces there. Not Ver Plank, Herbert. And if you actually followed the Main Street Access measurement codes, you could put five spaces directly across the street from this, and still have adequate lane widths. I don't know why they didn't do it when they striped the spaces, but, so there's five spaces available right across the street, on-street parking spaces.
Where is this? Mysterious spaces, I didn't know.
What's that?
Where you can theoretically put cars, where people actually put their cars, where a person...
Well, that, yeah, that's, they would be striped on the street, not up on the grass. You have room for five spaces.
You're talking about down further toward Melzinga?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, no, it's, it's between East Main and Ver Plank.
Yep.
Right.
There's room for five more spaces across the street. I measured it.
Yeah.
After the meeting last time.
Yeah. I just find it hilarious sometimes, John. I see you, when I'm driving home from these meetings, out on Main Street with your measuring wheel. I'm like, wow, this guy is committed. Okay. In support of the waiver, though, dispassionately, in support of the waiver?
In support of the waiver, with this condition, that we seriously look at doing a capacity study?
There's no conditions. Are you in support of the waiver or not?
I'm just making a suggestion.
And if we want to talk about something the city wants to take up, let's not take the applicant's time in order to talk about it or debate it. So, let's keep it relevant to the application.
I'm in support.
So you're in support. Thank you. Are you in support?
Support.
Great.
So, that, we don't need to act on that.
Yeah, I think just a consensus is sufficient, and then that'll be memorialized in an ultimate rule resolution. But at least we know the applicant doesn't have to pursue a...
Yep. You're clear on that?
We are clear.
Great. What else can we do for you this evening?
That would be it, Mr. Chairman. Procedurally, as the planning board attorney mentioned, we will be submitting to a landscaping plan, as Aria mentioned, so we will include that, so that, with that, and I believe some lighting details, hopefully, we'll be at the next meeting able to set for, the board sees fit at that time, a public hearing, but not for this evening, just letting you know. Stay tuned. But we'll, as Aria mentioned, we're working on it, and we appreciate all your comments.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to the next agenda item, which is our review of an application for subdivision approval, three-lot residential, 44 Kent Street, submitted by Hardy Homes LLC.
Mike Bodendorf filling in for Dan Kohler of Hudson Line Design. I'm joined here by the applicants tonight, and we originally submitted this plan in December, but never appeared before your board. We received comments. Well, let me explain what the project is first. It's a, it's a residential subdivision, a three-lot subdivision of an existing lot. I think I have connection now.
Okay. Sorry, I forgot, I even forgot. That's okay, he's doing fine.
Existing lot located on the south side of Kent Street. The lot currently contains an existing two-family residential structure, located here, and there's a detached garage in the rear of the property, and an old foundation remains. Those structures will be demolished to allow for three lots to be created containing three residential structures. Now, let me just back up to why we had to withdraw from that first planning board meeting that we were looking to get on in January.
Hang on, can I stop you for a sec?
Sure.
Does, is it procedurally better if we declare intent to acts as lead agency before? Doesn't matter. Okay. I just want to get it right.
Okay.
Please proceed.
So this line you see going through the lots is a five-foot underground stream, basically. And it came to our attention after we made the submission before the planning board occurred, the meeting. So we withdrew from those meetings to go back into our homework, to try to figure out where this line was, because it wasn't on our survey, we didn't exactly know where it was, we didn't know how it would affect the subdivision.
Sorry, it's an underground stream?
Yeah.
It's the asylum brook.
Yeah, okay. There's also, there's also a city main running along that, right?
A city.
A easement for some form of city.
Well, that's, the asylum brook is running in, yes, it's, it's running through this five-foot diameter.
Correct. So as part of this subdivision, we're proposing a 25-foot easement along that line, and that's denoted by these lines here. There is another easement proposed on this lot, that's for onsite drainage to bring it out to Kent Street. This is the proposed layout, three residential structures, all with individual driveways accessing Kent Street. Water and sewer connections will be made to Kent Street, and we're proposing onsite drainage, where a portion of the drainage will drain to the Kent Street drainage system, and a portion will drain to the rear of the lots, where we're picking up with a swale and a series of catch basins and culverts to bring it back out to the Kent Street drainage system. We believe that this application is unlisted, therefore, it would be an uncoordinated review. Let's see what else here. We did receive comments from the consultants, I believe. We've already made those changes on our plans, and we'll be resubmitting those on Thursday.
Okay, great. Go to the consultants, start with John Clark.
Hey, they responded all my comments, so I'm clean.
Probably the first time in history you've left John Clark speechless. Well done.
Well, it's Dan's job, it's not mine, so.
It's Dan's, Dan's gun.
I don't have that record.
He should probably get there.
Mr. Russo, what do you got?
So we'll need maintenance and easement agreements for the drainage systems that are going to be installed between the lots. We'll need easement agreement and description for the 25-foot-wide easement that's going to be provided to the city. We'd like to see the possibility of regrading the drive in the area behind proposed residence on Lot 1. on Lot One, so that drains towards the yard basin and away from the neighbors. And there's a few cleanup comments.
Great. Any questions of the applicant or consultants around the board? Because we got, you have something?
Nothing to read to this.
No.
Just curious where asylum brook continues to from here.
It actually goes all the way out down to Teller, and empties out in Madame Brett.
It goes from Memorial Park to Madame Brett.
Underneath Tyronda.
It used to go underneath that brick building at, they had to reroute it.
Mr. Weber's building.
Yeah.
Where's the, where's the culvert start?
Memorial. One more. One second, sorry about that.
Okay, we have three things that we can address here. Number one is to authorize notice of intent to act as lead agency on this.
Before, before we do that, though, so, is the applicant planning to submit for the April meeting?
Well, that depends on what we can get at those meetings.
Right, so here's, here's the issue.
You're talking about the crunch?
If you, since we have an option, it's an unlisted action.
Yeah.
You do a coordinated secret review, which means you would circulate to be your intent as lead agency.
Yeah, got it.
You'd have to wait thirty days.
Right.
And then you can, can move forward with your secret determination. If the applicant is ready, and if you're ready to schedule a public hearing for your April meeting in two weeks, there's sufficient time to notice.
Yeah.
You can do an uncoordinated secret review, which means you don't.
That's why you mentioned uncoordinated, okay. Yep.
And you can move forward with secret.
Oh, okay. So strike that, then. You want it uncoordinated, it makes more sense, it'll move things along. Okay. So forget what I just said. I'm gonna cross, I'm gonna cross it out in my notes.
Okay.
And so, we could also, as Jennifer mentioned, set a public hearing for me.
For April.
I'm sorry, April. I'm gonna fix my notes.
Yeah, we're, we're ready to do that if the board is, is okay with that.
Yeah, great. Thoughts or otherwise of motion?
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Len, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we could also discuss directing Jen's office to draft NAGDEC. Thoughts on the matter? Or otherwise a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kevin.
Second.
Seconded by Karen, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, and just one question. We can't have the subdivision public hearing simultaneous with the seeker. That has to happen after the seeker.
Yeah, so we would typically adopt the NAGDEC, as they just directed to be prepared for April, and then in the same meeting, open the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just in that sequence.
Okay, very good.
What she said.
All right, agreed.
So do you have to have a vote to open, to set the public hearing for?
So we just had a vote.
We had a motion for the public hearing for seeker.
A motion to prepare secret documents, and a motion to schedule the public hearing for April.
Okay.
So April will do secret, and open the public hearing.
Yep. Clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. Review application for site plan approval and subdivision. This is a lot merger approval. Mixed-use commercial and residential, one fifty-two, one fifty-eight Fishkill Avenue. Wow, still here. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if I should steal Jennifer's talking points, or?
This is the first time this application is being reviewed by the Planning Board. As we just mentioned, it's for both site plan and subdivision, a lot merger, elimination of lot lines for both mixed commercial and residential in the T zoning district.
Zoning District T. Okay.
I'll talk through it. Yep. Yeah, that way I'll plug it in. Okay, with that, thank you, Ms. Gray. For the record, Taylor Palmer with the law firm of Cuddy and Fader, on behalf of the applicant. Tonight, I am joined by the project architect, Jaclyn Tyler, from Nexus Creative, and our traffic and parking consultant is Rich D'Andrea of Collier's Engineering Design. We are also joined by the applicant, who's here with us this evening, our project engineer is Mike Morganti of Arden Consulting Engineers. We are gonna bring up the site plan in just a minute, so we'll plug in in just a moment. So I will buy Jaclyn just a little bit of time on the site plan piece of this. As the Planning Board Attorney mentioned, we are before you this evening in connection with a new application for site plan and subdivision, or lot merger, approval proposing to redevelop the property for a mixed-use development located at one fifty-two, one fifty-eight Fishkill Avenue. Some of you might know the property as the Blue Multi-Family House and Double D's Auto. Before I turn it over to Jaclyn to review the site plans, I just wanted to give a quick background about the property for the benefit of the board, and then give you a little quick overview of the applicant's proposal, which will, you'll see visually in just a moment. As we first discussed with city staff at a pre-submission meeting on January twenty-third, the property is comprised of two lots. The one fifty-eight Fishkill Avenue is about a half-acre lot, it's point four-one acres, is presently improved by an automobile detail center. And then one fifty-two Fishkill Avenue is about point five-nine acre property, and it's presently improved by the Blue Multi-Family House there. The applicant proposes to consolidate these existing two lots into one resultant lot. The premises is presently classified in the T Transitional Zoning District, and it abuts properties classified in the RD five, RD four, and CMS districts. So notably, the property is not in the city's historic district overlay, not in the HDLO. The property is across from the Valero Gas Station. All these, by the way, we have some visuals submitted in your package, and Exhibit A will include sort of the site layout, where you can see sort of the existing street views of the site, the existing curb cuts into the site, sort of the passageway behind the buildings along Main Street that exist. The surrounding areas also includes commercial and multifamily, which includes high-density multifamily residential at Hamilton Fish Plaza, which is about seventy plus or minus units. There are also townhouse and single-family developments, gas stations, and other mixed-use retail and office uses in the area. In just a minute, Jaclyn will go more specifically through the proposal at a higher level. But the new building program includes a new mixed-use building with office space on the first floor, and then sixteen total residential units on the upper fours, both of which are uses permitted in the T District. Again, these are recently re-zoned, a lot of these properties, or all of them, were PB, what the city used to consider the parking district, or aspirationally considered the parking district. Two of the apartments will be below-market rate units, as is required in the Workforce Housing Law, which requires a ten percent set aside for the BMR units. There will be a rooftop terrace provided for tenants. As Rich will touch on in just a minute, the building will provide a pedestrian and vehicular access from Fishkill Avenue, and it will provide, and I'm sure somebody will correct tailor math, sixty-two off-street parking spaces. The project will also allow for the creation of five on-street spaces, which results from closing off those existing curb cuts related to the existing two lots. And it is also consistent with the Fishkill Avenue Rehabilitation Project, which is approx. in Main Street. We've discussed that in prior applications, including the four sixteen Main Street application mentioned at the last presentation. Importantly, the project does represent a transition between Main Street and the surrounding mixed-use commercial institutional and residential neighborhoods that support Main Street, and it was designed in furtherance of those efforts to bring the city's core around Main Street while respecting the community character of the surrounding area and neighborhood. The structure will front along Fishkill Avenue, and it will also neighbor commercial uses while the proposed parking lot and retaining wall and landscaping separate the structure from residences along Skank. Procedurally, again, we are an application for site plan approval. We are a subdivision by the strict confines of your regulations. We are not proposing any new lots, we're merging the lots, but it is a, considered a subdivision in your code. The applicant is, as distinct from the last application, which relates to a waiver, I think there was a mention about this application earlier, we are seeking, we are going to discuss, our traffic consultant will discuss, the shared parking related to the proposed office and residential uses, and that's a different section of the zoning code, that's two twenty-three, twenty-six, C six. And Rich will discuss that in just a minute, and that relates to our traffic study and shared parking. So while the project is largely zoning compliant due to the site constraints and the topography in the area, the applicant understands that de minimis area variances will be required for this application, and that's specific to the height of the retaining wall on the west side of the premises, and then either an interpretation or an alternative variance related to how the building height is calculated in the zoning code. So those are the two pieces of relief that will be necessary. Here, we are an unlisted action for the purposes of seeker, and discussing it with the Planning Board Attorney. If the board sees fit, we would, would hope the board would do a coordinated review so as to not do seeker twice with the Zoning Board of Appeals, as typical with this type of applicant, excuse me, application. With that, I will turn it to Jaclyn, please, to run through the site plan, and then we'll have Rich run through the traffic and parking details.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, my name is Jaclyn Tyler with Nexus Creative. I will walk through the site plan. Mr. Palmer did a fantastic job stealing all of my lines, but I will walk you through the site plan itself. As he mentioned, we're proposing a two-and-a-half-story mixed-use building, which we have here on the screen now, with a total of sixty-two parking spaces, requesting two, a waiver for two of the required sixty-four spaces. I want to emphasize, we did have our pre-application meeting, it was very productive, we thank you for that process that you will have here in Beacon. I think we incorporated a number of the items and planning notions that were discussed, including providing an accessible route from Fishkill up to the entrance. I want to emphasize, the entrance to this building will actually be on the rear side, on the parking lot side, that's where everybody will enter. We are providing a secondary means of egress off the, off the front, which is along Fishkill Avenue, but again, most of the traffic circulation will be along the rear of the property. That's, you know, we're emphasizing that as the main entrance, that's where everybody's going to be monitoring the entrances, and the individual entrances to the commercial spaces will all be along that back sidewalk, which is covered by the second floor above. We do have a total of sixteen units. Actually flip through these. We have a total of sixteen units, and as Taylor mentioned, at the top level, we do have a roof terrace. We have worked within the area to try to make sure, we actually have views, if you, I know you have the material in front of you, but if you flip to the last page, we do have views that we're working on Mount Beacon, so that's something that we want to emphasize here, the fact that you can utilize that top area. We know that a large majority of the site is taken up by parking, so therefore we want to provide some type of, I would say, amenity space for the tenants in the space.
Sorry, how is that a view of Mount Beacon?
Off the back. Yep, so.
You're saying?
We will, we will reorient the perspective, I'm just saying, up on this top terrace, you are able to see Mount Beacon from there. Yes. We haven't studied that specific view yet, but up on, up on the top terrace, you'll be able to see that. We did take into account, we worked hard to make sure that this is a two-and-a-half-story building, which the building inspector did interpret that that is, that is considered a two-and-a-half story. I think our only question is where the grade is taken from, as Mr. Palmer mentioned, so we'll be working together with the city on that portion. The back view, again, as Taylor mentioned, most of the back here is a majority of the parking spaces. We do have some retaining walls along the back, which we'll be seeking some variances for. Here, you can see on the bottom, on the bottom of the page, you can see the heavy black line that's indicated on the site section. That is the natural grade of the site currently. So you'll see the fact that the, the entrance side of the building is actually placed at grade, so that's how we ended up with the positioning of the, the building itself. So we are providing an on-grade entrance at, again, what we're kind of consider the rear, but in our mind, it really is the front of the building. With that, I think I will turn it back over to Mr. Palmer.
Rich D'Andrea, Collier's Engineering and Design. We prepared a traffic impact study for the project dated February twenty-fourth. We generally looked at traffic impacts for Fishkill Avenue, Teller Avenue, and Main Street, and Fishkill Avenue at Ver Plank. We collected some addition, some new updated traffic volume data for those two intersections to base our study off of. And we did some projections of traffic volumes to a future design year of twenty-twenty-six to analyze future impacts of the project. And we also considered some of the other developments that are proposed in the immediate vicinity, three sixty-four Main Street, four sixteen Main Street, to account for the traffic that's generated by those developments as well. The project itself is projected to generate a total, during the PM peak hour, which is the highest hour, a total of thirty vehicle trips new to the area. When we analyzed the, that traffic through the study area intersections, there was no, no significant impacts identified. I will note that the Fishkill Avenue, Teller Avenue Rehabilitation Project does have some modifications through this area proposed. One of those is the addition of a left-turn lane on Teller Avenue northbound at Main Street. There's also some signal actuation upgrades for the Main Street traffic signal and the Ver Plank traffic signal, so those were also accounted for in our study. I think your traffic consultant can comment on our study, but generally, I think they're in agreement with what we've put together so far. On the parking end of things, I think Taylor had mentioned that we had prepared a shared parking analysis to assess the shared uses of, usage of the onsite parking between the residential uses and the office on the first floor, taking into account that typically you have varying peak hours of use for those, the part, for the parking occupancy there. We did this based on the city code, and we referenced Institute of Transportation Engineers' data for the hourly distribution of parking throughout the day. And basically, what we found is that on a weekday, we require, I believe it was fifty parking spaces during the highest hour. On a Saturday, if we go strictly off the city code, we need sixty parking spaces. So we're, we're sat, we're within the range of what we're providing onsite at sixty-two parking spaces. Obviously, on Saturday, the one thing the city code doesn't take account for is that the office spaces are generally typically gonna be much less utilized as far as parking goes. We did look at that as well, based on the IT manual for, for the office parking. And that, in that scenario, we actually reduced the Saturday parking demand to like, to twenty-four spaces, so much lower than we were, are providing onsite. With all that, we are, we are requesting that you consider reducing the parking requirement for the project based on what's allowed in the city code, so.
So, sorry, did you have anything else?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
So, yeah, let's, let's just jump right to the shared parking. So just as far as my reading, I mean, it is.
Do you want to hear from Stark?
Oh. Yeah. No, I do, but I was just, I was just going to say, if I hadn't been so rudely interrupted, that, and I'm sure, I'm sure Stark's gonna say the same thing, but just, I just wanted to understand, just real briefly, the parking requirement, and I've got your report up here, because I can't remember. The parking requirement by code is sixty-four spaces.
Sixty-four. Correct.
And that's the shared, shared parking space concept, understanding that you've got two disparate uses just in terms of the time of day, would, results in your request for, or a demand, in your thinking, of fifty-two spaces? Is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure I got it right.
Yep.
Because sometimes I read this stuff, and my mind goes blank.
Right, because, so, that peak hour demand occurs in the mid-morning, I would call it, ten to eleven is what we're showing. So during that time period, we're showing that the office would need forty-two spaces, but the residential, of the sixteen units at one space per unit, is down to seven spaces at that time period.
Yeah, so it's just a, different types of uses.
At different times, usually utilize the parking, right.
Yep, okay, just so I understood. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Stark?
I'm still here.
Great. Hit it.
I can cover like, the full traffic comments, or do you want me to stick to just the shared parking analysis?
No, well, let's, let's start with shared parking, since we're there, but any other observations you'd like to bring to our attention as a board, please do.
Yeah, so regarding the shared parking analysis, we actually, we had provided two comment letters. The first was requesting that the. comment letters. The first was requesting that the shared parking analysis be done, and then we came to find that they had prepared one, so we reviewed that. Their analysis uses the City of Beacon parking code for determining their requirements, and then applies the time-of-day distributions from ITE, which is a standard practice, and provides, I think, a conservative analysis for their shared parking analysis. So we agree with the findings that they have. I think that they're, my understanding, I guess, that they're requesting a waiver to have just 52 spaces be the requirement. The Saturday data that they have shows it requires 60, but I think as Rich discussed, you know, that's assuming that the office space is acting in the same way that it does on a Saturday as on a weekday. So the 52 could be considered the peak demand of the site, since that's what's occurring on the weekday.
Stark, one clarification, we're providing 60 onsite, so we're requesting a reduction to 60, not 52.
Oh, okay, so there you go. Then I think they'll meet the anticipated demand even with their conservative analysis using the City of Beacon parking requirements. And the reason I say that that's a conservative analysis is because ITE does provide data on parking demand that they could have sourced when conducting their analysis, but I think in order to keep it, you know, considerate of the City of Beacon requirements, that's what they, that's what they used.
I'm sorry, I missed the last few words you said. The city requirements, what, Stark?
So the way that they conducted their parking, their shared parking analysis, is they determined the peak, or they determined the parking requirements based on the city's code. So that gives them their, basically their max demands, and then they apply time-of-day distributions from ITE to determine when the parking demand occurs throughout the day.
Yep.
And ITE also provides data on peak parking demand that they could have sourced, but it's actually less than the city's requirements. So their analysis is conservative and considerate of the city's code while also being realistic with the time-of-day distributions.
Okay. You get it.
Is there a good argument that their 60 spaces is going to be overparked?
It's, sorry, I misspoke before. It's 62 spaces.
62 spaces, overparked, and we might want to consider, like we did up at Hip Lofts, to landbank a few spaces, so they would have some green space on the property for the tenants. Do you think there's an argument for that?
We, we can look at it. I think that that is something to be considered, yeah.
We also, I mean, it's on the site plan that's off on the board right now, but we also have created five on, we're not taking, we can't take credit for them because they're on-street parking spaces, but we are also creating five on-street spaces in addition to what we're providing off-street.
You can actually put six there.
Well, I think, I think it's five, and there's one also there already based on the city's plan, so it's, will be, I think it will be a total of six.
Yeah, based on their analysis, I would say that 52 would work. I mean, I'm a fan of not overparking a site.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time hearing you, Stark. Say that again?
That their analysis shows that their peak demand would be 52 spaces, so if you want to have that be what they designed to avoid overparking, that's what I would recommend. I do think that they need to take into consideration, though, that we're concerned about the parking space location at the refuse. Just didn't know how that was accessed. That was in our initial comment letter. And then also, the consideration of the additional ADA space.
Yeah.
Other than that, I think the only other parking-related comment we have was including an EV, if they wanted to, we recommended including EV charging spaces.
This would also, reducing the parking demand would also allow us to add additional landscaping and other mitigative measures, too.
And then a destroyed ADA space.
So, so your thoughts on this idea of designing, building to 52, and then landbanking the rest? Yeah?
So you could waive two, based on shared?
Yep.
And landbank whatever it is, 10.
Another 10, yeah.
And that would give you some green space along the northern property boundary, for instance.
Yeah, I like it.
And if it shows that they really need it, you could bring it back.
Yep. Thoughts, board?
I actually had a concern, you know, there's a retaining wall there that's not compliant, and one of my concerns was that if, in fact, it was impossible to build that without disturbing the adjacent property, if there wasn't an agreement, that they might have to build that in two lifts, right, and then to make it compliant, and that might reduce the amount of parking that they're showing, and allow an opportunity for landscaping and other things. Might be a way of redoing the parking to buffer that space, which would be kind of an unsafe, I think, the way it's set up, because there's no landscaping or other, I don't know if there's a means to prevent, to create, make it that a safe thing for the neighbors.
Sorry, why is it not compliant?
It's too high.
It's too high. Retaining wall can't be greater than six feet.
Yeah, okay. So you've already observed that. Okay. Great. Any other thoughts, comments? So I think we're generally, we're generally in the support of, I was just, I was just talking to your back there for a second. We're generally in the support of this shared parking idea.
Okay.
So, at the moment, again, board, any other questions for the applicant or comments? And otherwise, John and John, any other highlights you want to point out for us or the applicant at the moment?
Based upon what was previously on the site, we've recommended an environmental site assessment be conducted if one has not already been done. We would recommend, you know, given the height of the wall that's proposed in that corner being 17 feet, and the amount of earth disturbance going to have to be done to install it, that some soil borings be conducted at this time to see if they can even excavate through it, or if it's rock in that area, if we want to know what's going on. The proposed sidewalks and curbs in front of the building, they should be coordinated with the current project for Fishkill Avenue. They're currently out to bid right now. We will be looking to see how the drainage is handled on the site. Right now, it's not shown. We would also like a drainage analysis for the site. They are about tripling the impervious from what's currently there on the two sides now.
They're what?
Tripling the impervious.
Oh, tripling the impervious. Thank you.
They should take into account snow storage areas, so if they can landbank some of those parking areas, that would at least provide for areas of snow. And we need landscape and lighting plans and erosion and sediment control plans, and then I have a bunch of cleanup comments.
Great. Thanks. I guess, at this point, while you understand you have work to do, we can go...
Can I throw in a couple more?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, forgive me. We already blew past...
The parking aisles are much wider than they need to be for backing out of cars, so unless they're designed for truck access or something like that, it seems to me you could add, tighten up the parking aisles and add more landscaping in that way as well.
Okay.
The, I disagree with the front of the building being in the back. You know, pedestrians, this is right off Main Street. Pedestrians are going to walk to this place from public parking and wherever else, if they're shopping and they want to go to whatever's there. Tenants will not want to walk around the building to get in. It seems to me, you could have an ADA compliant entrance in the front if you worked off the far end instead of the short end where you need steps. But, you know, I suggested that, and I'm not sure it's possible, but it seems to me it should be. And the front should always be the front of the building, and you have an entrance there, you have a door there, it's a common lobby. I understand where you put the ADA parking, but still seems like you should try to create an ADA accessible entrance to the front of the building, where people are most likely want to, going to want to wheel in. And the, the proposed Fishkill Avenue reconstruction project has the entrance to this in the wrong location. So you're going to have to coordinate with the city to allow you to move that entrance to where you want it to be, which is the right place to be, in terms of the big building configuration, instead of the middle of the block where you'd have to divide the parking, the building in half. So you're going to have to coordinate with the city over that. And also, I'm asking, right now on that sidewalk, there are utility poles right in the middle of the sidewalk, so there's no way to get around them conveniently, and the city can't, because it would encroach on your property to widen the sidewalks, so I'm asking that you consider widening, providing configuration on your site plan to allow for a four-foot clearance around that utility pole. That's something we, I remember we asked on another site plan, and they accommodated us on their property. So that's something to think about.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. It's late. I don't want to get too deep into it, but just as far as your observation about the front being the back and vice versa, I agree. I think, you know, activating the frontage along Teller, is it Teller? Yeah.
Fishkill.
Fishkill, oh, so, okay. Stops being Teller at Main Street. What city is this?
101.
Is that, I don't know, it just, it just feels as though it's turning its back to the city and engagement and pedestrian. You know, that whole length there is very underactivated, you know, as it is, and it's, it's a, it's actually a decent thoroughfare to Memorial Park. So to be able to take advantage of that, I fully agree. And then beyond that, so I would, I would, you know, urge you to really consider that and look at it. Beyond that, I think, and we can go into this later, we're obviously going to refer you to the ARB at some point, but I'll just leave it at, there, there is a lot of work to be done around sort of the aesthetic of this building. You know, I appreciate what you're trying to do here with your initial submission, but I think there's, there's still some work to do and a lot of discussion.
Absolutely. Yeah, I will address, and we'll look at again, as far as the accessibility. Obviously, we have provided a pedestrian route along the front side on Fishkill. When we initially reviewed getting the accessible entrance on that side, and we did look at it closer to, to the left side of the building here, we were going to have to require a double-back ramp to get up there, so we would end up taking up the entire, what you see as landscape area right now between the building and the street edge, but we'll, we'll look to see if there's another way to do that. We thought it was better to provide the landscaping in front of the building, but we're happy to look at that, for sure.
Yeah, you know, and of course, appreciating the fact that, you know, persons with disabilities need to be able to access, just the idea of the front of the building.
Absolutely, I get it. My cousin-in-law, he's wheelchair-bound, so I totally get it. Yep.
Sure, that's obviously considered.
The way I look at it, you could eliminate the walkway on the south side, and just have steps up to the front door for
Right.
non-wheelchair people, and then have the wheelchair come in from the high end.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. On the high end, we still, when we initially looked at it, we still weren't able to achieve it without a double-back, but we'll, we'll explore some other options. We also looked at some possibilities of coming in at potentially a lower level, like a half a level down, coming in and then having a lift up from that half level up to the main story, so we can continue to explore that.
Okay, great, appreciate that. Yeah, the idea of this whole frontage being sort of one big ramp, again, not taking away from the fact that it's necessary.
That's what we tried to stay away from, yep.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, just one clarification.
Just one clarification. John, you were talking about the driveway to the property on the Fishkill Rehabilitation Plan. So the way I read that plan, and maybe we just need to look at it a little closer, is that's the existing driveway to the residential house that's there? So I don't know, that may need to get constructed that way and then modified later if the city's going to come through. I don't know.
No, I think we could get it modified now.
Now? Okay.
Those plans are based upon what's there currently. They know about this, so.
Right.
That would make sense.
Okay.
I think they have, when I looked at it, I think they had one shared driveway in the middle, assuming that you could go to the residential driveway and then go over to the double thing.
Yeah, I don't, that's not the way I read the plan, to be honest with you, but we can, yeah.
I just want to make sure that it doesn't get built.
No, I don't disagree with you, I'm just, yeah.
And when I talked to the city administrator, he was not interested in changing the bid package or putting in change orders, because that's just going to cost the city, you know?
No, I think it can be done as an addendum now while it's still out to bid.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So that we don't have to change orders later.
Okay.
Go where you go.
All right, great. And the only other thing we can do tonight is issue notice of intent to act as lead agency. So I'll accept a motion to do just that.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you.
Could I just, one question?
I have a question, too.
Ladies first.
Absolutely.
I'd just like to reiterate the concerns about the soil, and maybe we should, did you request soil? You requested soil test?
Borings.
Soil borings in a site, environmental site assessment.
Talking about contamination.
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 Is an auto body shop. Do we want to, you know, get ahead of the ball and retain an environmental person to assist us?
Well, let's see what the, let's see what their report comes.
For the record, we have a Phase 1 ESA and, one and two.
Yeah.
And two.
Boom.
And it doesn't show anything.
Is it in here?
Stay tuned.
Yeah, I think it's a little early, but it's a good swing.
Just to keep it, put it on the...
Let's put a pin in that.
Right, and I'd also like to second your concerns about the aesthetics, given the context in which it's set.
I thought so.
We'll call Valero and see what they're, they're thinking.
Mr.?
Yeah, and my question was about how, what section of the code was used to determine that this was a two-and-a-half-story building instead of a three-story building?
Yeah, so the definition, the definition in the code for, for the half-story is that it's allowed to have a knee wall up to two feet, and then the roof then starts on that going up. So it's kind of like they're building that third floor within the roof level, right? The attic space, sorry, within the attic space.
And that's for the state code, right? State residential code or state commercial?
No, that's, that's the zoning code.
That's the zoning code? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's...
So you wouldn't be able to do a flat roof?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
And then they would, they would measure that, that deck
Exactly right.
From the top of the deck down will be their overall height.
Yes.
Because I'm wondering whether we want to examine that, because I'm wondering if that's driving some of what might be a problematic image, you know, part of what's presented itself.
In the T District, you're only allowed a two-and-a-half-story building, not, but 35 feet. So it sort of forces you into an arrangement like this with either dormers or, you know, cutouts in the gable or whatever.
There are plenty of ways to achieve that aesthetically, so.
We're going to work on that.
More work to be done.
All right.
Indeed. Only one point of clarification, just for all the applicants, and I apologize to our cohort here. I don't know who these people are, but I feel, I've never seen them before in my life. I'm surprised they didn't pull a Taylor Palmer and ask to move ahead. But, but, not that I'm trademarking, but it's copyrighted. But John, John, and I guess Mr. Chairman, what would our, for your purposes, I know Amanda's been courteous enough Thursday, is that, is Fri, would Friday be sufficient time?
I'm probably not going to pick them up until next Monday.
We can, what we propose to do is submit everything on Friday electronically and get whatever Amanda needs, so to speak, in hand, but we'll submit, if the boardsies fit, we would submit to Jennifer, all the Jays, not including the chairman, electronically. So we'd have you and Mr. Russo electronically, we could also submit, mail them directly to you if you'd prefer, so that any applications go to you all, and then Amanda gets her copies separately, and if that would, give us till Friday, we'll give us 72 hours to get all these materials in hand. It's really asking the Johns, not...
Which project? This project? All your projects?
All ye projects. I was, I was speaking for any applicants before us this evening.
Chill, man. It's a snowstorm.
Seventy-two, today is the submission deadline.
So, so you're asking for Monday?
We're really asking for Friday, but we would, we're not going to object to a Monday, but that's, that's a...
It really comes down to-
Yes, that's their, check and consults, yeah.
Whether you all feel you have sufficient time-
I'm going to be in Beacon next Monday, and that's when I will pick it, pick them up. So I, I'm fine with Friday, or even Monday.
Okay. You good?
I'll make it work.
Okay, you guys are amazing. It's only Amanda that's irritated by this whole thing, right?
Yes, you do.
As long as these guys get-
We, we appreciate it, Amanda, thank you very much.
So you have your answer?
We'll make it easy, as we can.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other thing that, to note on this is because it's in the T District, there are no design standards for the T District.
Free for all.
That was an oversight.
Well, there's no design standards for the GB District either, it's only the Main Street and the Lincoln District.
And not in the HDLO.
And it's in, or the HDL, yeah.
And across from a gas station.
Okay, is there anything else? Thank you very much. Then we have two architectural review certificates of appropriateness, and you'll please forgive me, I need a minute.
Chairman, can I just-
Have a good evening, everybody.
... words here. Uh, this is not on-
Bye.
Thank you, Stark.
... section, but it will be on your miscellaneous business section for next meeting, ARB Subcommittee.
Oh, we need to appoint, we need to appoint a new member. It's just going to be Karen.
Yeah, so Jill was on the Subcommittee. Um, we also, the existing members, which I believe is Len and Karen, right? Your terms have long since expired.
Okay.
So, um, I think at the next meeting, we should adopt a new resolution, reappointing Kevin and Len, who want to remain, and if the board is in agreement, and if you want Karen to be the third-
I would love to nominate Karen.
... best appointment, we can identify those three.
Karen, Karen.
As long as there's dreams to be crushed, I would like to stay on the ARB.
Yeah?
I'll do my penance, yes, I will do that.
Oh, you're the best.
So we can have that resolution-
Okay, so let's draft it up.
... the next.
Awesome.
Thank you again, and sorry to these people that I've never met.
I'm going to make them wait another minute. Okay. And boy, I haven't been happier to see two familiar faces in a long time. In fact, I almost peed my pants. So happy. Great to see you guys.
So we're building our own single-family house.
This is Glen Avenue.
Yes.
Fantastic.
I bet the mark will drop here if you want it.
Yeah, we've got, we've got it electronically. We, we have come into the modern age, except for the chairs.
Yeah, oh my God.
They're the same chairs, probably even from before your time.
No, no, those are the original chairs.
They were, they date back to 1867.
No.
They feel like it.
So 2006.
And I have to applaud you for being a model submission and for making it easy for us to-
We would expect nothing less.
... understand what you're doing, so thank you.
You have sample boards here if you need them.
Uh, sure, since you brought them. Let's see them in real time.
So the siding is going to be, not this color, it'll be that darker gray color?
Yep.
Okay, with black windows, white trim, uh, but it'll be a double four siding?
Yep.
With a shake upon the, on two, uh, reverse gable. And with a oyster gray shake.
Making me hungry.
How many oysters?
Yeah, let me just see the, I just wanted to see those two together. Is it just, just compared to the renderings, the shingles, the shingles are going to be a little lighter than the actual-
Yeah, she is.
Because this is your siding.
Yeah, that's the siding, and that's the shingle.
Which would look better than the rendering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the printer's going through so much, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's why you bring the materials, it's really handy.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yep, and then obviously white trim, black windows, and then is this a natural wood you're intending?
Yes, yep, that's the doors, it's a mahogany.
Oof, fancy. Um, thoughts, comments, questions?
Looks good to me.
You're not going to mention that, that the, uh, shutters, no shutters?
We don't use shutters nowadays. Love it, thank you.
Actually using some shutters right now.
The only shutters I would ever want would be ones-
Using some shutters.
You are?
Yeah, yeah.
Like when they were-
Right. You're using shutters because your house was built so that shutters actually work for their intended purpose. In this case, this is 2023.
Yeah. And some shutters close on that end.
Yeah, it's nice.
Beautiful, I'm sorry, you didn't hire Aria, though.
I don't see much of what I see tonight, it's pleasing.
Yeah, very nice. So I will accept a motion to approve.
Motion?
Motion by, who is that? David? Kevin?
Yeah, I'll second.
So, motion, but you got to, Amanda needs your help. Motion by David.
Motion by me, and a second.
Second by Kevin. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aren't you glad you sat through all of that?
It reinforces my decision to retire.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and seeing you guys here looking so great, I might just think, doing the same. Thank you, it's great to see you guys. I forgot about that. So, okay.
So we have a bowl?
Oh my God, that was just out there.
We have to, we have to-
I think so, yeah. Good evening, sir.
Hi, I'm the owner of the Residence over Plank Avenue, also the architect, uh, submitting for the Architectural Review Board.
Fantastic, thank you. Um, I don't assume, since your hands only have a bottle in them, that you brought samples, but-
I did not bring any samples, it is a James Hardy board and batten system, white, uh, gaff timberline roof, charcoal gray, as often seen around the city. Uh, black framed windows, trim mostly in gray or white.
Uh, your renderings almost look like an Edward Hopper.
'Tis the season.
Yeah, and thoughts around the board? So, sorry, just orient me a little bit better, over Plank, and-
It's on the north side of Plank, near Kent Street, there's like an, is this going into the, what was in side yard, or?
Yes, that's right, we did a subdivision over the last year.
Right, this is the-
This is the Ver Plank subdivision.
Right, directly behind the Kent Street application that was on earlier tonight.
It was between Eliza and Castle.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. There's a big tree right there now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Massive tree.
Yeah, yep.
Yes, now I remember. Oh, that poor tree.
It's dying.
Is it? What'd you do to it?
Is that Bruce?
God, we have fun here, don't we? Um, any other thoughts? I mean, I'm generally in support.
Yes, can you just describe the detail, um, I guess what would normally be maybe a rakeboard, I don't know if I'm talk-
On the gable end?
You're talking about the gable end here?
On the gable end, like your detail, um, can you just talk us through the detail of your roof detail?
Just a one-by-four coming up onto the edge, then the battens approaching the one-by-four.
It's very European.
It is.
Yes.
It's a terrible waterproofing detail, but that's not our job.
Correct.
I mean, honestly, I think sometimes the weathering doesn't, you know, you'll have to paint more often.
Sure.
You'll, other things might happen.
There's pros and cons.
Stay in the planning board's land.
Yes.
I, 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 I am just discussing some of the-
And this is like, just, uh, we don't have to worry about setbacks or anything, it just looks very long, like-
The site planning was already approved.
Yeah, he's, he's got to comply with the, um, okay.
All right.
Motion to approve by-
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Lena and Kevin.
Go.
Take your pick, Amanda.
Pick one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a nice morning.
Thanks. Okay.
Wow.
I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Len.
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor? Aye.
Yeah, we got out of here before midnight, now this, this turned out okay.
Ding dong.